Okay, thank you everybody. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order October 17th, 2013 at 7:36 PM. Could we please have the roll?
Roll call. Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ward. Absent. Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Also in attendance is Barry Lewis, Village Administrator; Steve Rather, Village Council; Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator; and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken tonight.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin the meeting to go into executive session. Could you please read the resolution by title?
Sure. Resolution 2013 dash 236, a resolution authorizing an executive session at the October 17th, 2013 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. The items to be discussed in the executive session, next G, which is a litigation attorney-client privilege matter, East Orange Water Commission and potential third-party water suppliers, that's a litigation matter, attorney-client privilege and contract negotiations, Robin Klein separation agreement, which is attorney-client privilege, a personnel matter and contract negotiations, updates from redevelopment council, those are attorney-client privilege matters and real property acquisition matters, and two additions that may not have been on the agenda on the website, what is the fire chief vacancy, which is a personnel matter, and Zipcar, which is a contract negotiation.
I move.
Second. Moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Schnall.
Yeah. Can we add another settlement in the Bertschall matter?
Okay.
To the executive session. It's a matter where I've reported to the trustees on before in writing.
It's litigation exception. Okay. So that's the Bertschall. Would you like to remove the executive session motion with that one addition? Removed by trustee Levinson and seconded by trustee Schnall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back out here at eight o'clock.
We're going to have to work on that. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. And just a notice, we just recessed our executive session, which we'll have to reconvene after the meeting to finish up all of our agenda items. Could we have the roll call again, please?
Trusty Clark?
Here.
Trusty Collins?
Here.
Trusty Davis Ford is absent. Trusty Levinson?
Present.
Trusty Rosner is absent. Trusty Chanel?
Here.
Village President Swirpy?
Here.
Also in attendance: Barry Lewis, Village Administrator; Steve Rother, Village Council; Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator; and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we've got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so I'm going to try and get through things quickly. The Village Hall has moved, if folks do not know that yet. We haven't moved physically the building, but our offices are located on the third floor of 76 South Orange Ave., which is right across the street from Village Hall. And you can just come in the front door, there's parking on Academy. And again, our offices are up on the third floor. All the phone numbers, email addresses, everything like that is the same. Electronics recycling, the next South Orange Maplewood Free Electronics Recycling Day is October 19th. And that's in Maplewood at 359 Boyd and Ave. And after that, the next one is December 14th. And that's at RDPW at 300 Walton Ave. There's no commercial vehicles permitted, as always, and make sure to bring a proof of residency. Leaf removal is beginning October 28th. Even though a lot of folks have started to put leaves out, please wait until that point, until the 28th. They'll be picked up through December 9th. If you'd like to see when your street is being picked up, you can go to southorange.org/leafcollection. If you do live on a county road, you can call the county at 973-239-3366 for more information. The South Orange Farmers Market, we're going to be able to keep open through October. So that's every Wednesday from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that's down in the parking lot off of Sloan Street and First Street. We have a paper shredding day at RDPW while you're -- get rid of your electronics and you can get rid of all your paper. And that is Saturday, November 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And please bring a proof of residency. The South Orange Rescue Squad has restarted or revived its cadet program. And classes have begun. They began last weekend, October 13th. The program is an opportunity for kids between 14 and 18 years old. If people are interested, or there are any parents that have kids interested, they can reach out to the Rescue Squad. I believe their class is actually oversubscribed right now, which is incredible that there's been such a great turnout. If you are interested, though, you can get in contact with the Rescue Squad and find out when the next class is. And you can contact them by email at sorescue@verizon.net. There is an auction for unclaimed bicycles, which will be held Saturday, November 2nd. And that's at 9:30 at Police Headquarters on South Orange Ave. Bikes are sold as-is, cash or check, and a preview of the bicycles will begin at 9:00 a.m. I'd also like to make sure folks are aware of the flower bombing this Sunday. That is 10:00 a.m. at Spiota Park. Basically, there are going to be, I guess there are bulbs planted that will bloom in the spring. So Public Works has been really great with getting all the different beds downtown ready. So if you'd like to participate in that, come down to Spiota Park at 10:00 a.m. And that, I think, will be from 10 to 2. The last announcement, I just want to congratulate our Senator-elect Cory Booker from the neighboring city of Newark. We're always excited to work with our elected officials at the county level, the state level, the federal level. Obviously, Frank Lautenberg was an incredible advocate for us as New Jerseyans. And we look forward to working with our new U.S. Senator. Our first order of business this evening is an exciting one. We are appointing and swearing in a new municipal prosecutor. So what I'd like to do is give the opportunity for the board to vote on a resolution to appoint this prosecutor. And if the vote, the motion is passed, we will then swear this gentleman in.
May I move?
This --
Oh, you want to read the resolution?
Yeah, let's read it first.
Resolution 2013-247, a resolution appointing -- please correct me.
Gracia.
Gracia Robert Montillas to the position of Municipal Prosecutor in the township of South Orange Village.
Mr. Lewis, is there anything before we vote that you'd like to say as far as just quickly the process?
Yeah, if I could, just a few words for the process and the benefit of the public. We did do an RFP and received a number of very qualified applicants. The Legal and Personnel Committee had a subcommittee we met with consisting of Trusty Davis Ford, Trusty Levinson, Village President, and myself. Mr. Rother participated, reviewed a number of very qualified candidates. We were, you know, ultimately, I think unanimously reached a consensus for Mr. Montillas. I think we were all universally impressed with his, not only his qualifications, his background, his experience.
We're gonna have to work on that. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. And just a notice, we just recessed our executive session, which we'll have to reconvene after the meeting to finish up all of our agenda items. Could we have the roll call again, please?
Trustee Clark? Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Swirpy?
Here.
Also in attendance: Barry Lewis, Village Administrator; Steve Rother, Village Counsel; Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator; and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we've got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so I'm gonna try and get through things quickly. The Village Hall has moved. If folks do not know that yet, we are now, we haven't moved physically the building, but our offices are located on the third floor of 76 South Orange Ave., which is right across the street from Village Hall. And you can just come in the front door, there's parking on Academy. And again, our offices are up on the third floor. All the phone numbers, email addresses, everything like that is the same. Electronics recycling, the next South Orange Maplewood Free Electronics Recycling Day is October 19th, and that's in Maplewood at 359 Boyd and Ave. And after that, the next one is December 14th, and that's at RDPW at 300 Walton Ave. There's no commercial vehicles permitted as always, and make sure to bring a proof of residency. Leaf removal is beginning October 28th. Even though a lot of folks have started to put leaves out, please wait until that point, until the 28th. They'll be picked up through December 9th. If you'd like to see when your street is being picked up, you can go to southorange.org/leafcollection. If you do live on a county road, you can call the county at 973-239-3366 for more information. The South Orange Farmers Market, we're going to be able to keep open through October. So that's every Wednesday from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that's down in the parking lot off of Sloan Street and First Street. We have a paper shredding day at RDPW while you're, get rid of your electronics, and you can get rid of all your paper. And that is Saturday, November 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and please bring a proof of residency. The South Orange Rescue Squad has restarted or revived its cadet program, and classes have begun. They began last weekend, October 13th. The program is an opportunity for kids between 14 and 18 years old. If people are interested, or there are any parents that have kids interested, they can reach out to the Rescue Squad. I believe their class is actually oversubscribed right now, which is incredible that there's been such a great turnout. If you are interested, though, you can get in contact with the Rescue Squad and find out when the next class is. And you can contact them by email at solrescue@verizon.net. There is an auction for unclaimed bicycles, which will be held Saturday, November 2nd, and that's at 9:30 at Police Headquarters on South Orange Ave. Bikes are sold as-is, cash or check, and a preview of the bicycles will begin at 9:00 a.m. I'd also like to make sure folks are aware of the flower bombing this Sunday. That is 10:00 a.m. at Spiota Park. Basically, there are going to be, I guess they're bulbs planted that will bloom in the spring. So Public Works has been really great with getting all the different beds downtown ready. So if you'd like to participate in that, come down to Spiota Park at 10:00 a.m., and that I think will be from 10:00 to 2:00. The last announcement, I just want to congratulate our Senator-elect Cory Booker from the neighboring city of Newark. We're always excited to work with our elected officials at the county level, the state level, the federal level. Obviously, Frank Lautenberg was an incredible advocate for us as New Jerseyans, and we look forward to working with our new U.S. Senator. Our first order of business this evening is an exciting one. We are appointing and swearing in a new municipal prosecutor. So what I'd like to do is give the opportunity for the board to vote on a resolution to appoint this prosecutor, and if the vote, the motion is passed, we will then swear the gentleman in.
Will I move?
This...
Oh, you want to read the resolution?
Yeah, let's read it first.
Resolution 2013-247, a resolution appointing, please correct me.
Gracia.
Gracia Robert Montillas to the position of Municipal Prosecutor in Township of South Orange Village.
Mr. Lewis, is there anything before we vote that you'd like to say as far as just quickly the process?
Yeah, if I could, just a few words for the process and the benefit of the public. We did do an RFP and received a number of very qualified applicants. The Legal and Personnel Committee had a subcommittee we met with consisting of Trustee Davis Ford, Trustee Levinson, Village President, myself, Mr. Rother participated, reviewed a number of very qualified candidates. We were, you know, and ultimately, I think unanimously reached a consensus for Mr. Montillas. I think we were all universally impressed with his, not only his qualifications, his background, his experience, but also with his demeanor, his air, the, you know, the spirit that we're looking for to really have a cohesive court. We're excited. He's actually in our new building as are both our judges, so we got everybody, and the public defender. So the gang's all at 76 South Orange. So it's exciting. I know I can, obviously, the others on the committee can speak for themselves, but I was very thrilled and looking forward to it. I think I can speak for Trustee Davis Ford as well. I know that she fully supported it, and we're excited.
Thank you. Unless there are any questions, I'd like to entertain a motion moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Cullen. Could we please have the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
The motion has passed. Has passed.
All right, and I believe we have Judge Rosenbluth here, who's going to do the swearing-in. Mr. Montillas?
Come on up on the stage. Get on the cameras.
Do we have an extra microphone up here?
You can use this.
We can take that one if you want. Maybe they should, because yeah, that may be a problem.
To all who are here, I'd like to just make a few remarks about my office mate, Gracia Robert Montillas. Along with his right-hand assistant, Debbie Kerzik, has been my friend for nearly 10 years, giving me professional and moral support as I worked my way up the ladder of the trustees and officers in the Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers. As people working together eight to 10 hours a day often do, I know Gras very well, and I'm really proud to call him my friend. You should know that Gras was born in 1967, went to Seton Hall, graduated in 1989 on Dean's List, received the Essex County Bar Association Scholarship for first-year law students, which he used to attend Villanova Law School, from which he graduated in 1992, passing both the New Jersey and Pennsylvania bar exams in 1993. Gras returned to Seton Hall, attending graduate school, and received his Masters in Taxation in 1996, on Dean's List again. And after passing the bars, he practiced tax law, civil litigation, criminal defense, and of course, immigration law. He's a proud member of AIL, American Immigration Lawyers Association, and he is fluent in both Creole and proficient in Spanish. In addition to his own practice of law, Gras has been for two years and is currently an Assistant Newark Municipal Prosecutor. Gras continues a very proud family history. His father, Robert Montillas, who is standing up on the stage, was also an attorney in Haiti before the family came to the United States. He then went back to Brooklyn College and became an accountant. His mother, Marie Denise Montillas, Marie, there she is, was an educator in Haiti, and then for 27 years, worked in the Newark Public School System. It is truly not hard to see from where Gras gets his work ethic and self-expectation of excellence. In my office, I have a plaque that says "Cedek Cedek Tirdov," which is Hebrew and is translated "Justice, Justice Shall Ye Pursue." If there are no extra words in the Bible, we ask why then is the word "justice" said twice? It has been explained that this phrase emphasizes that one can only be considered a just person if one is just in both one's religious life and in one's secular life. They are both necessary columns in any personal hall of justice. Having myself been an Assistant Prosecutor in Essex County for seven years, I know firsthand that a prosecutor must always do justice, tempering advocacy for the state with humanity, mercy, and common sense. I know, because I know Gras, that he will make a truly excellent municipal prosecutor, and it is an honor and with very real pride that I introduce to you all formally Gracia Robert Montillas, our next Township of South Orange Municipal Prosecutor. Gras.
First of all, I want to thank the board for the diligence and the time they took. I don't think that they could have selected a more qualified and competent candidate. We are looking forward to having Gras serve in the court. It can only enhance the court, and we do appreciate the board's diligence in that regard. I'm gonna give you your oath of office. Your dad will hold the Bible. Would you raise your right hand, and would you repeat after me? I, Gracia Robert Montillas...
I, Gracia Robert Montillas...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
...and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to same...
...and to the governments established in the United States...
And to the governments established in the United States...
...and in this state...
And in this state...
...under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people...
...and I do further solemnly swear...
And I do further solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
...impartially...
Impartially...
...and justly perform the duties...
And justly perform the duties...
...as a municipal prosecutor...
As a municipal prosecutor...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
...and that I will not use my office...
And I will not use my office...
...to grant preferential treatment...
To grant preferential treatment...
...nor to seek personal gain...
Nor to seek personal gain...
...favor...
Favor...
...or advantage...
Or advantage...
...not available to the public...
Not available to the public...
...so help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations again. I think we're all very excited. Before we do move on, I do want to make sure to say that it's with the utmost respect and thanks to Drew Baumann, who's been serving the village for years as our municipal prosecutor. I think I can speak on behalf of all the trustees in the village to thank Mr. Baumann for his service to South Orange and wish him the best. Thank you. Okay, so our next order of business this evening is a proclamation that I'd like to read aloud at this point for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October 2013 marks more than 26 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection, whereas October 18th is National Mammogram Day, whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public service organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women and their families. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women except for non-melanoma skin cancers, and whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death in women exceeded only by lung cancer, whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment, therefore be proclaimed by the Village President and Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village on behalf of all of the citizens of South Orange that they hereby do declare October 2013 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes, memorialize lost battles, and help educate everyone. Thank you. I don't know if we have anybody here to take the proclamation this evening. I don't think so. Okay, at this time, before we begin any, get to our ordinances, I'd like to open our meeting up for public comments. I don't know if we have a sign-in sheet somewhere.
Yes.
Was there something in the back there?
There was...
Maybe someone wants to run down. Okay, our first, I'm actually having a little trouble with the name. Is the person who signed up first in the room?
What's the name?
I'm not sure. I'm having a little trouble reading it.
Watson.
Watson is the last name?
Yes.
Okay, just feel free to come, you can just come up to the microphone there. Oh, okay, thank you. Leslie? Nope, no Leslie. And the last name, the third name, again, I'm having trouble reading. Rayford? Sure, yep. And just come up to the microphone and just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Rexford, 355 North Wyoming Avenue, South Orange.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm here because I read on South Orange Patch, once again, we're having issues with water, and I want to know what's going on. And being a cancer survivor, my wife and I are ready to sell the house and move. I just don't understand how this continues to go on and on, and how you guys can sit there and let this happen. So we need to do something, filter it, spend a lot of money, not pay these guys, take them to court, find another water source. I want to know what you guys are gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Yep, just please come up and...
Hi, I'm Maya Gilman, 109 Rinder Road, South Orange. To Craig Rexford's point, my simple question is, if we wanted to reassign the water contract, what would it take to do that? Step by step.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, so I'd like to close public comments. I think maybe the best way to address the concerns, which we're absolutely gonna be able to do tonight, is maybe to do it when we just get to the resolution, which is gonna be in about just a couple minutes. So we do have actually a resolution that was added a little bit late, and maybe when we do that resolution, you can just give a little bit of a brief history for the folks that are here.
Sure.
We can do so. So that'll just be in a couple minutes, we'll address those concerns. Do we have one ordinance on first reading?
Yes. Ordinance 2013-17, an ordinance to endorse and authorize the installation and operation of traffic control signal by the County of Essex at the intersection of Scotland Road and Raymond Avenue in the Township of South Orange Village.
Thank you. So we had passed a resolution earlier this year asking the county to do a whole number of different traffic improvements to Scotland Road, kind of coming out of a conversation about pedestrian safety and speeding. Pedestrian safety, especially at Raymond and Scotland, and speeding all throughout Scotland. And we did pass that resolution, sent it along to the county, and they, since that point, they've done a couple of the points that we've asked for, including restriping some of the crosswalks, and we, and also ordering some more improvements basically for Scotland Road, which includes some vegetation improvements and other things. And what we, the last time we spoke with the county, we had a meeting just to get kind of an update on the status. Basically, they asked us to then pass an ordinance, and so we were happy to oblige to do so. Obviously, this is something that we're interested in seeing move forward as fast as possible. So hopefully, this ordinance will, from the county perspective, get the process moving, and they can begin, they've apparently actually budgeted for this already, knowing that, you know, our intentions were that we wanted to do this. So this ordinance just puts a resolution that we already passed in ordinance form, for the most part. So unless there are any questions?
Just to point information, is it resolved that it's a signal versus stop sign? Have we...
Yeah, it's basically, it's gonna be a signal, but the actuation of the signal, the timing, you know, we discussed that a little bit, and the county engineer, as well as our engineer, as well as some of the residents from the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee are basically gonna meet at that point. And once they pass this, then it'll kick it to their engineer, and then they'll come back and basically have some conversations about some of the timing. So there were some concerns that we all expressed about what we think needs to be done, not necessarily in engineering terms, and then they'll basically take those concerns and things, put those into, you know, okay, well, what does that mean for the actual installation of the light? And so that conversation, actually deciding all those details, hasn't been had yet. And they said that once we pass this, and their county engineer looks at it, then we'll basically have that conversation. So we've had, we've had it in a more preliminary and formal sense, but it hasn't been nailed down exactly by their engineer or their consultants, you know, exactly what it will be. But it will be, it will be a red light, it will be a full intersection, full traffic control. So there'll be, you know, green light facing, green-red facing Scotland and Raymond, as well as pedestrian signals.
Do they give any sense of timing? Do we know the process?
Well, as soon as this is passed on second reading, I guess for some procedural thing from the county, they need this, they need the ordinance passed on second reading. And then as soon as that happens, it sounded like because they've already budgeted for it, it's gonna be very quick to have that conversation, you know, like the following week. So, so as, so, once we have that conversation, what we can do is also make sure to update folks about where the timeline looks like from there.
A couple questions. In terms of, I know this is a carryover from before, so I'm trying to remember what the prior board did and where this left off. Is there going to be another notification to the residents that this is actually happening, or did that already happen, that whole process of the neighbors coming forward and talking about this? Because I won't get in the way of it, but I...
public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public service organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women and their families. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women except for non-melanoma skin cancers, and whereas breast cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in women exceeded only by lung cancer, whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Village President and Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village on behalf of all of the citizens of South Orange that they hereby do declare October 2013 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes, memorialize lost battles, and help educate everyone. Thank you. I don't know if we have anybody here to take the proclamation this evening. I don't think so. Okay. At this time before we begin any, get to our ordinances, I'd like to open our meeting up for public comments. I don't know if we have a sign-in sheet somewhere.
Yes.
Was there something in the back there?
There was.
Maybe someone wants to run down.
I think it's the sign-in sheet. It's outside, outside.
He's the runner.
Our first, sure, I'm actually having a little trouble with the name. Is the person who signed up first in the room?
What's the name?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm having a little trouble reading it.
Watson.
Watson is last name? Okay. Just feel free to come, you can just come to the microphone there. Oh, okay. Thank you. Leslie? Nope, no Leslie. And the last name, the third name, again, I'm having trouble reading. Rayford? Sure, yep. And just come up to the microphone and just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Rexford, 355 North Wyoming Avenue, South Orange. Okay, well, I'm here because I read on South Orange Patch, once again, we're having issues with water, and I want to know what's going on. And being a cancer survivor, my wife and I are ready to sell the house and move. I just don't understand how this continues to go on and on and how you guys can sit there and let this happen. So we need to do something, filter it, spend a lot of money, not pay these guys, take them to court, find another water source. I want to know what you guys are going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Yep, just please come up and...
Hi, I'm Maya Gilman, 109 Rinder Road, South Orange. To Craig Rexford's point, my simple question is if we wanted to reassign the water contract, what would it take to do that? Step by step.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, so I'd like to close public comments. I think maybe the best way to address the concerns which we're absolutely going to be able to do tonight is maybe to do it when we just get to the resolution, which is going to be in about just a couple minutes. So we do have actually a resolution that was added a little bit late, and maybe when we do that resolution, you can just give a little bit of a brief history for the folks that are here.
Sure.
We can do so. So that'll just be in a couple minutes, we'll address those concerns. Do we have one ordinance on first reading?
Yes. Ordinance 2013-17, an ordinance to endorse and authorize the installation and operation of traffic control signal by the County of Essex at the intersection of Scotland Road and Raymond Avenue in the Township of South Orange Village.
Thank you. So we had passed a resolution earlier this year asking the county to do a whole number of different traffic improvements to Scotland Road, kind of coming out of a conversation about pedestrian safety and speeding. Pedestrian safety especially at Raymond and Scotland and speeding all throughout Scotland. And we did pass that resolution, sent it along to the county, and they, since that point, they've done a couple of the points that we've asked for, including restriping some of the crosswalks, and we, and also ordering some more improvements basically for Scotland Road, which includes some vegetation improvements and other things. And what we, the last time we spoke with the county, we had a meeting just to get kind of an update on the status, basically they asked us to then pass an ordinance, and so we were happy to oblige to do so. Obviously, this is something that we're interested in seeing move forward as fast as possible. So hopefully this ordinance will, from the county perspective, get the process moving, and they can begin, they've apparently actually budgeted for this already, knowing that, you know, our intentions were that we wanted to do this. So this ordinance just puts a resolution that we already passed in ordinance form, for the most part. So unless there are any questions?
Just to point information, is it resolved that it's a signal versus stop sign? Have we...
Yeah, it's basically, it's going to be a signal, but the actuation of the signal, the timing, you know, we discussed that a little bit, and the county engineer, as well as our engineer, as well as some of the residents from the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee are basically going to meet at that point. Once they pass this, then it'll kick it to their engineer, and then they'll come back and basically have some conversations about some of the timing. So there were some concerns that we all expressed about what we think needs to be done, not necessarily in engineering terms, and then they'll basically take those concerns and things, put those into, you know, okay, well, what does that mean for the actual installation of the light? And so that conversation, actually deciding all those details, hasn't been had yet. And they said that once we pass this, and their county engineer looks at it, then we'll basically have that conversation. So we've had, we've had it in a more preliminary and formal sense, but it hasn't been nailed down exactly by their engineer or their consultants, you know, exactly what it will be. But it will be, it will be a red light, it will be a full intersection, full traffic control. So there'll be, you know, green light facing, green-red facing Scotland and Raymond, as well as pedestrian signals.
Do they give any sense of timing? Do we know the process?
Well, as soon as this is passed on second reading, I guess for some procedural thing from the county, they need this, they need the ordinance passed on second reading, and then as soon as that happens, it sounded like because they've already budgeted for it, it's going to be very quick to have that conversation, you know, like the following week. So, so as, so, once we have that conversation, what we can do is also make sure to update folks about where the timeline looks like from there.
A couple questions. In terms of, I know this is a carryover from before, so I'm trying to remember what the prior board did and where this left off. Is there going to be another notification to the residents that this is actually happening, or did that already happen, that whole process of the neighbors coming forward and talking about this? Because I, I won't get in the way of it, but I certainly didn't think this would actually solve the problem. If our own engineer and county engineer believe that it will, I'll take their recommendation, but I just wasn't sure where it left off with the neighborhood itself. I thought the points that you raised at the meeting that I watched, the one that I watched where you kind of outlined alternatives, I would have actually liked to see more of those alternatives rather than the light, which I think is more the grand hoo-bah for that neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason, maybe the easiest way to say it, the only reason why this is on for, even up for discussion again is the county wanted an ordinance, not a resolution. So, you know, I think as far as we're concerned, all the conversations have basically already happened.
Okay.
And, you know, and that the consensus was that there were a whole bunch of alternatives, like some of the ones that you're probably thinking of that we want to do, and as well as, you know, as well as doing the light, but we weren't sure, I think where we ended up was a compromise of, well, we're not going to say the light has to be actuated in this particular way, you know, whereas I think there was some interest at the beginning of deciding at that point in time that this was going to be a light that would be basically, you know, triggered by, you know, pedestrians, or be triggered by cross-traffic on Raymond, and that we basically said, well, we're going to leave that up at some point for the engineers to decide. But that it seemed like the consensus from the neighborhood groups was that this was something that they wanted, and, you know, that's through the Neighborhood Association in the area and the Transportation Advisory Committee.
And our engineer also signed off on the light?
Every, as far as I know, everybody's signed off on the light.
Okay.
Well, and even at the recent meeting with the county, there were residents...
Right, right, we had two residents.
Residents members of the traffic committee there.
Right.
Okay.
Including one of the most vocal members of the neighborhood group.
And I, and I think that also they're in charge of the Neighborhood Association as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Moved by Trustee Schnall.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Levison. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark? The board passed ordinance 2013-17 on first reading.
Okay, now normally, Trustee Davis Ford...
So you're looking for a motion, which I won't make, but I can say it, and then somebody can echo it, that the ordinance number 2013-17 be set down, advertised and set down for public hearing at the order trustee meeting scheduled, we can't do it then on the next meeting, there's not enough time, but it's scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th.
Correct.
2013.
What he said.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Okay. So now at this time, we have a resolution for separate action, which I'd like to consider, and maybe we can do it actually separately so we can address some of the concerns that were brought up as well. Ms. Smith, if you could just read the resolution number by title?
Yes. This will be Resolution 2013-248, a resolution appointing a committee to negotiate for an alternate, alternate source of water.
Thank you. Maybe Mr. Rother, if you just want to try and give...
Sure.
...a brief kind of overview, and we can also direct folks to our website, which has got a little bit more information about some of the updates and developments that have been happening, which we could probably do actually a little better job of maybe consolidating all of the updates that we posted into one big kind of, you know, here's the whole history of this that we've publicized. But, Mr. Rother?
Yeah, well, this matter, of course, has, has been an issue for some time, and the village commenced a, an action against East Orange Water alleging a series of violations of the agreement to supply water and manage the water system of South Orange. There are a host of contract violations and exceedances of DEP standards, which we have alleged, and which have resulted in the court appointing a special master to manage the litigation. During the course of that litigation, we have served upon East Orange Water with a notice of material default, which is a preliminary step to allow us to terminate the contract. However, terminating the contract isn't a simple matter, as you have to find an alternate source to provide water once, once you do terminate it, and alternate water sources are dependent upon interconnections with water mains and sufficient supplies and reservoirs or wells, and the, such sources are limited. The trustees and its consultants have been actively engaged for some time in looking at variety of alternate sources, the feasibility of doing it, and, and the costs associated with it, and have now focused on really one practical alternate source. And this evening, the resolution that's being proposed for adoption would appoint a number of trustees and staff to a committee to negotiate with that party for an alternate source of water. Of course, while, while this is ongoing, DEP is of course taking action with East Orange Water Commission to ameliorate the problem, and everyone should know that with the authority of, or I should say, the consent direction of DEP, alternate sources of water have been opened with Newark and with New Jersey American, so that the most recent exceedance that was reported has been very substantially reduced. Since that reported exceedance on September the 30th, an additional test has been taken, and, and the concentration of PCEs has dropped dramatically, well below the level which is established as a violation by DEP. So that at least for the moment, with all these other sources having been opened from Newark and New Jersey American, there is no immediate exceedance problem. Everyone should understand that even the exceedance that was reported does not present an immediate health violation. The New Jersey standard is well below the national standard and the standard imposed by many of the adjoining states to New Jersey. For instance, the federal government has the standard of five parts per billion, where New Jersey standard is one. And so we, we are fortunate to have a, a very concerned DEP that keeps the level low, but even though it is low, an exceedance is for us a very serious thing, and we're taking it seriously, and we're looking at those alternate sources, and this step that is being taken tonight is another step in that direction.
Thank you. And if I can just, maybe just reiterate just a couple things for anybody that's watching, or the folks that are here, is the, you know, one very important part is that there isn't an immediate concern to your health from drinking, bathing, and doing anything with the water as it is right now. Like Mr. Rother said, the 1.8 exceedance is still well below New York State standard, the federal EPA standards, and the, the most, I guess troubling part of the exceedance is not necessarily the immediate concern, even though that was further ameliorated by diluting that source down by bringing water from, like you said, from Newark and from New Jersey American water, but is that it shows that the problem that has existed for many years has not been sustainably solved. And that's really part of, part of the, a larger issue with the East Orange Water Commission. So I just want to make that very clear about the health concerns, you know, which we obviously take very seriously, and if there were any possibility or inkling that the, that our water supply was in any way dangerous in the short term, you know, we would have emergency notifications out to all the residents, it would be very, very clear that that's what was happening. And so there are, sorry?
And the DEP.
And the DEP would also take those same measures, but we would have even our own responsibility of just alerting everybody through every possible medium, and if we had to even go as far as distributing bottled water, or whatever we had to do, you know, that's what would happen if the test results and the conversations with the DEP gave us the impression that there was a possibility, that there was a health concern. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear. And again, as far as this resolution tonight, that an alternate source of water has been identified, and this committee is being formed to negotiate with that particular alternate source of water. And that's happening in the very, very immediate short term, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, in fact, those sources are actually open right now. The reading is taken at the wellhead, which is at the East Orange wells, it's not the measure that's taken here in South Orange, and the water that we're getting from New Jersey American currently and Newark is now mixing with that water, and so the number is significantly lower than what would be presented at the wellhead.
Right, and as soon as that number, as that exceedance was identified, water from other sources began to come into the system to dilute, you know, that, that exceedance. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Rother, could you also go over what the process would look like if we were to change our water provider, if the board made that decision?
Well, there are, there are two stages to that. One, one could buy water in bulk from another provider and purchase all the other services that are necessary, namely meter reading, billing, and the maintenance and repair and operation of the system. You would have to contract for all of those other services. There is another alternative, which is to sell the water system. The legal process to sell the water system would take the better part of three years, including a referendum. One can't sell a, a water system without having a referendum, so that even if ultimately that were the desire of the, the trustees, there would have to be some interim period where there would be a, a bulk water purchase and all those other services contracted for.
Mr. President, to your point about getting something on our website that just kind of culminates everything, I believe there's also the video from when the DEP folks came and spoke to the residents, and I think a lot of the questions from the recent website posting about what does this number mean, maybe those folks would want to go back to the video, because I thought it was a pretty good meeting, and...
Is that listed in the videos section?
It's probably, yeah, I can pull it up and send it to you, but if we can get that back on the homepage so that folks can understand what this number means, while it's high, it's, as you said, doesn't constitute a real immediate health risk, and they went over that quite extensively on that meeting.
Right, we've had, we've had two informational meetings with representatives from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Health Department, the State Health Department.
Yes.
And we, you know, had opportunities for residents to come and ask a lot of these questions and make sure that any possible question or concern, there were ideas floating out there around, well, it's safe to drink, but it's not safe to bathe, and all these different things, you know, they kind of debunked all of that, and so that's something we can definitely... Is it listed right on that front?
I found it. If, if people want to go to the website, southorange.org, and go to videos, on that page, you go to miscellaneous, it's at the bottom, and the, the second item is DEP/East Orange Water Meeting, and that was a pretty good, maybe two-hour meeting, where residents came and asked questions specifically about what these levels mean, and what level of risk it is to anybody in the community. I thought they did a really good job of answering those questions.
And we'll make that, so you can go find that right now in that way, and we'll also make that more prominent on the main page of the homepage, and we'll put some updated information about that as well. And if people do have any questions, they can obviously reach out to any member of the administration, and we're, we're happy to, you know, point people to resources or anything else. And we'll do our best to consolidate some of that information and get it back on the website in a little better, a better understandable way. Are there other questions or comments?
Has this resolution been posted to the village website for the public's benefit yet? Because we just got it, so you might want to read it, it's not very long.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we just got it.
So, "Whereas the current provider of water to the South Orange Water System has been unable to consistently supply sufficient water, meeting the quality standards of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, whereas it is advisable for the Township of South Orange Village to seek an alternate water source, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village that trustees Levison and Clark and the village administrator and village council be designated to negotiate with providers of alternate sources of water for all or a portion of the water needs of the village on an interim, short-term basis." We don't normally do a question and answer period at this time.
We can have a second.
We will have a second public comment period, that's true. So, so perhaps if you can hold off a little bit till we get to that point, just so we can keep the meeting structure in place, and, and hopefully we can get to your concern then, and if for some reason not, you can also leave your information up here, we can get back to you as well.
So I'm just...
Okay, that's fine. I'm easy to find. Thank you. Okay, so this is the resolution to be considered, 2013-248.
I move the resolution.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
For the record, is this a motion to add it to the agenda?
This is a motion to adopt it. Would you like us to do a motion to add it to the agenda first?
Well, we should, yeah.
Okay.
What is the number on it?
2013-248.
Basically, it's a motion to suspend the rules of the agenda, to add Resolution 2013-248 to the agenda.
Okay, so, so the, the motion that we're asking for right now is to add this to the agenda?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen. Seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And I move to approve 248.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to move on to our consent agenda.
Yes, a moment, please. I will begin by reading the resolutions. Resolution 2013-237, a resolution appointing 2013 fall season baseball program assistance in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution 2013-238, a resolution authorizing a public auction and sale of abandoned and unclaimed bicycles. Resolution 2013-239, a resolution hiring for DM crossing guards in the South Orange Department of Public Safety/Polic Force. Resolution 2013-240, a resolution authorizing a placement of a lien on private property for a special cleanup of private property at 346 Academy Street in the amount of $1,602. Resolution 2013-241, a resolution appointing a part-time employee in the Department of Public Works. Resolution 2013-242, a resolution requesting and authorizing addendum to the municipal court in our local service agreement with the Township of Maplewood to include third-party collection services. Resolution 2013-243, resolution providing for the filing of a statement of consent to TWA, one permit application for sanitary sewer extension for the Third and Valley Development by Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC. Resolution 2013-244, a resolution authorizing the execution of Federal Transit Act, Section 5309, agreements with the New Jersey Transit for two jitney buses to be utilized by the South Orange Parking Authority. Resolution 2013-245, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2013 Ford Explorer four-wheel drive for the Department of Public Works through vendor Bayer Ford under the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council contract 15C, item two, in the amount not to exceed $25,355.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on any consent agenda items?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levison.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved.
You skipped me.
Pass.
Port Ms. Cullen.
Cullen? She does exist. Trustee Cullen, last but not least.
And yes.
Now it's approved officially.
Thank you. So we had another resolution that was listed for separate action tonight. This is 2013-246. Just read, yeah.
Resolution selecting option for new rescue squad facility and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications consistent therewith.
Thank you. This was a resolution that was going to be before the trustees tonight to select one of two options that were asked for the last time we discussed, the new rescue squad facility, basically whether the facility will incorporate an emergency shelter space or not. So Mr. Lewis and I, along with the architects, the... So, Mr. Lewis and I, along with the architects, the team of people that are working on the, the new rescue squad building with Jonathan Rose, and what we were hoping to do was, by this point, have those two options, be able to present them to the trustees, have the trustees have a cost estimate of what each of the two different designs would be, and then the, the board can make a decision, and we would move forward with directing the architects and everybody else to do that. We got the cost estimates back Tuesday night, and they were much, 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 much higher than we were anticipating. And so we decided to not ask the trustees to consider this because we would never ask the trustees to consider something that was significantly out of the budget that we had established. So, there have been no formal decisions or action or anything on the new building or relocation, just discussions with the architects, Jonathan Rose, cost estimators, to try and figure out how to basically put this building together in the budget that we established, that $1.1 million number. So we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:30 with the entire team to go back over the plans that were delivered to us Tuesday night and figure out a way, and we do have some level of confidence that with some value engineering and a couple decisions or directions to go in, I guess, as far as the kind of materials used and things like that, that we'll be able to bring that down into, you know, where we need to, to be able to consider which of these two options we should choose. So we have that meeting on Friday. We hope to have the two options ready for the trustees to consider and make a decision by our next meeting on the 28th. Mr. Lewis, is there anything to add to that?
I think that pretty well.
Okay. Are there any questions about that process or, or anything?
How is the timeline for meeting, getting it constructed in time for the development?
Well, fortunately, the timeline included a pretty significant amount of time for us to make decisions. And so I don't think that this is actually going to change the timeline that they actually wrote up.
Right. Well, and ultimately, I, I think the, it became fairly apparent that we were not going to be able to have a new one and have it moved directly in the new one, and there's going to be an interim one.
That's the question.
So really, at that point, whether it's, you know, obviously, we want to keep it as short as possible, but one doesn't really dictate the other.
Right.
Then I probably would ask, I think tonight we were preparing to vote on A or B. If the timeline isn't going to be a, a big factor, what I would prefer is we have the discussion first and then have some level of agreement, and then what the next resolution would be, would be very specific about what we're choosing so that we're not doing an either or at a meeting.
Well, that's what we were asked to provide the trustees was either or.
Mm-hmm.
That was a decision by the board.
Yeah, but I, I mean, the resolution authorizing it that night, the same night that we discuss it. Do you know what I mean? Like, we get the options, we discuss it, we need time to process, hear what everybody has to say up here before.
We can, I mean, we can always push it back again. I mean, I think what we should do is try and move as fast as possible and not, you know, kind of by default, make it take longer than it needs to.
I agree. I think if you guys could have a discussion for the next meeting, at the regular meeting, I'm fine doing the special meeting with the next enacting resolution, but I'd just rather us have discussion first here and then...
Well, certainly, there's no expectation that we're just going to vote on it without having a discussion. You know, I think that it's expected that as far ahead of time as possible, the trustees will get the different reviews along with the memo. That explains the differences along with the memo from me, talking about our needs and risks as far as shelter, sheltering goes, and so that hopefully there'll be a lot of information ahead of time, and then we will absolutely have a discussion. And if people don't feel comfortable making the decision that night, we can always table it like we're going to have to do tonight to the next meeting. I'd really love to try and keep the schedule as fast as possible. And again, that doesn't in any way handcuff people to saying, you know, we've had a discussion tonight, we got all the information, we can't decide which one we want to do, we've got to push it off in another meeting, so I would table this. And, you know, that, that certainly, you know, would be your prerogative or any trustee's prerogative to do. But I, I'd just really love to not set it too far. You can always move it back, but you can't move it back up.
Yeah, I agree. But I mean, we would be able to, I, I'm fine with the tabling, but I just think it's easier and cleaner that at the next meeting, if you have your thing on Friday, we have another meeting, you know, less than two weeks from now where we can have it as a discussion item, and two weeks later, we can enact whatever resolution we want to move forward. I do personally like the buffer time between a discussion, getting feedback, and then putting a resolution forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, again, you can table it if you'd like to. I'd rather not push it off. You know, I don't think there's going to be a lot of discussion, because I think it's going to be a very easy decision. You're just looking at two different floor plans, right? One is going to be a little bit bigger and cost a little bit more, one is going to be a little bit smaller and cost a little bit less. So really, I think the, you know, decision that's going to come down to is, okay, well, is the amount of money, the differential between these two things, you know, worth it for us to have a shelter? And based on the memo and the discussion that we would have, from what I would provide, if you feel that there is a need for a shelter and that this cost is, you know, reasonable, then you make the decision to do it. You know, there's not, you know, we're not going to be redesigning walls and deciding what windows go, you know, none of that's really on the table at that point. You know, it's really for the trustees to make the decision about which one to move forward with, and that direction's provided to the engineers, to the architects, and to the team to actually go ahead and start, like, putting that plan together.
Well, until we see the drawings, we don't really know what's on the table, because right now, we're just all talking in theory what, what exists, what the costs are.
Well, we've looked at floor plans in board meetings before.
The floor plan that we saw was the one that Mr. Baumann presented.
Yeah.
Back in February, which wasn't a floor plan. Well, it was kind of, it was a sketch. It wasn't anything substantive.
Yeah, again, I mean, we'll get all this out as, as far ahead of time, and if folks don't feel comfortable making a decision, I, you know, I'd, I'd really like to keep the timeline quick. So if, 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 again, if, if people aren't comfortable making a decision, that's totally fine, and we can just table it again. I, I don't, I don't really see the problem with that. You know, again, you can push something backwards, but if we don't list it as a resolution and we meet next time and everybody looks at it and is like, oh, this is extremely obvious, this, you know, you get five extra, you know, 5,000 square feet and it's $1 more, of course we're going to make the decision. Now we don't have a resolution prepared, and now we just wasted two weeks. So, like I said, you can push it back if you want to, you always have that option, but you can't move it forward if you decide at this point to not list it. You see what I mean? So you're not actually limiting any options for what action you can take by listing it in the next meeting. However, by automatically deciding at this point that you won't be ready by the next meeting, you are limiting your options. So I would suggest that people go with the one that doesn't limit your options. That's all.
Please just get us the information as soon as you guys can, if we're preparing for a vote and discussion on the 28th.
And we'll try and do better than, this was very cramped, the Tuesday to Thursday, and we're trying to get more days between that when we get the stuff back next time.
Yeah, well, we will stress to them at the meeting tomorrow the importance, as we already were, and we got it Tuesday night.
Right. Again, if, if it, if we get everything Friday night or Monday morning or something, you know, we won't, we'll, we'll basically do the same thing, come to the meeting and say, sorry, we couldn't have gotten it ahead of time, you know, we're going to ask that you table it. So there's not going to be a pressure to do it, you know, if people don't feel comfortable with the amount of time they've had to review and make a decision.
Okay.
So I would just ask for a motion from someone to table this to the next meeting.
I move to table it.
Okay, moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Schnall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Before we adjourn, like to open it up for public comments. At this time, if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, now would be the time.
Left.
The gentleman, yeah.
He left. He said he'd track you down.
He did say he would track me down. That's a little ominous.
[laughing]
Okay, all right, then I'd like to close public comments and ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Moved by trustee Levison.
Ten seconds.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, adjourn. Feel like a clown. So at this time, I'd like to call our conference agenda meeting to order, but I'm not going to bang the gavel again. Could we have the roll?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Calum?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison?
Here.
Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President, who are you?
Here.
Also in attendance, Barry Lewis, Village Administrator; Stephen Rother, Village Counsel; Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator; myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk; and also Mr. Rother's assistant.
John Visconti.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in a bulletin board, on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue, on the village's website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Excuse me. Official action may not be taken.
Thank you. Okay, everybody's favorite part of the meeting, the village president's report. I heard some laughter, I don't understand why. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to, got a couple different things here. One is the village hall move, and I'm going to let Mr. Lewis speak to some of the logistics a little bit more, but I wanted to make sure, and I know he will do this too, to thank him, Adam Lerner, our deputy administrator, Ed in Engineering, Stan in IT, all the DPW workers, all of our employees actually, really, have been incredible throughout this process. And I know you'll echo the same thing, but moving is not easy to do. Everybody's moved one time before, moving an entire office with, I would say, decades, perhaps centuries worth of files is not easy to do, and people just really did a great job, and the offices are pretty much fully functional, set up. Everybody's moved in pretty comfortable on the third floor of 76 South Orange Ave. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody know that an enormous, tremendous amount of work by our staff and our employees went into making that happen. And fortunately, it was just, just across the street, but, but it really, it really was a feat that it went, you know, basically, all happened in three or four days over a weekend. Services were interrupted, you know, very, very marginally, you know, during that time, and, and everything's pretty much up and running now. So I just wanted to make sure to recognize our employees for that. I have listed here the private higher education zoning laws, but I know that's on for discussion a little bit later tonight, so I'm just going to hold off on that. I also just wanted to personally thank Bill Angelina and Mayor Masha of Pescara, Italy. They, every year, Reservoir hosts government, public elected officials and police and fire from Italy for the Columbus Day parades, and I had the opportunity to meet a colleague of mine from Italy, and it was a very fun experience, and I just wanted to make sure to thank them and gave them a, kind of a letter of proclamation that, you know, thanking them for coming here, and we'll send some follow-up to them, but for coming to South Orange, it's always kind of fun to have people visiting town from out of the country, and, you know, I know, I know they love it, and Billy at Reservoir is always a, a great host. So I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in that. An update on our website. The website is pretty much built and designed. It has not been fully developed yet, as in, we haven't filled in all the content to the website. That's the next piece of this. So we have a, kind of a working draft of the website, and we're starting to organize what content we want to move over from our old site. It's almost like moving Village Hall, there's so much information contained on the old website, most of it we don't want to move over, it's out of date or hard to understand. So we're going to, you know, very carefully go through and make sure that everything that we do move over is only the necessary stuff. And obviously, that will include all of our agendas, minutes, resolutions, ordinances, code, all that kind of stuff is, you know, without question being moved over, but it's the department pages, the integration with our service request 311 system, public stuff, our emergency alert system, Everbridge, all these things are all kind of coming together right now, so making sure that that all rolls out, rolls out the right way is very important. We reviewed the website a couple times in, I think, two different Public Information and Marketing Committee meetings, looked at kind of the, the stage of the website in the last one, and it's very exciting. It's, it's going to be an incredible upgrade from what we have, but now it's up to us to basically just move all the content over. So that's kind of the update there.
What is the expected date, do you think, for completion?
Well, we got a little, I don't know, slowed down, I guess, with the move, but, you know, I think that expecting us to have all the content moved over, you know, in two to three, maybe four weeks max is, is pretty reasonable. You know, Adam has already pledged he's going to stay up every night. Okay. He's already stockpiled coffee in his office. You know, we're, we're all going to work on it. Once we make some important administrative kind of decisions about which, how departments are organized on the new website, moving the content over is kind of a, almost mechanical thing. The real tough part is just figuring out exactly how everything's going to be organized in a better way than that.
And when it does launch, it will have the 311 system.
When the website launches, it will have the 311 system ready to go, and it will have, and built into that as well, will be our, will be Everbridge for emergency notifications. So what we've done is create a, a single signup for both of those systems. Public stuff has actually been really pretty great with creating a single signup form, so when you go to the website to submit a service request, your information will also get pushed over to Everbridge. So anybody who fills out something for a pothole and they put their email and phone number in, they'll also get emergency notification. So the idea being that we push everybody through one kind of portal and collect as much information as possible so that when we do send out the emergency notifications, we've got the most people possible. Everything will be up and running with the new website when it launches.
Are we still encouraging people to sign up for emergency notifications with our old website?
We're not discouraging, I suppose, we're not encouraging yet. If someone wants to sign up, you know, they, they should sign up, but we're not doing any campaigns or anything around it.
But it will be reported.
What's that?
It will be reported.
Yeah, every, we're not losing any information, you know, as we move this over.
No, what I'm saying, if people now want to sign up for emergency notifications, is it pretty much still down right now? We're not taking that information?
We're, we're always taking the information, but again, we're not, we're not doing outreach about it because we'd rather wait till the new website and then our public stuff signup that links to Everbridge, and that's not done yet. That's not integrated into the old website. That will be integrated into the new website.
I'm just saying, because we're, we're in, like, hurricane season, we're getting closer to the winter, so people might be thinking about, where do I sign up for notifications?
Ms. Lerner, for residents who would like to sign up, they can call my office, and I'm manually putting that into the system at this point, so.
Yeah, his cell phone number is, oh, your office number?
[laughing]
Yeah, and we also have admin@southorange.org or contact@southorange.org.
Admin.
So admin@southorange.org, you can just send an email to, or, we did set up the emergency management email too. So if you send an email to emergencymanagement@southorange.org, if you're confused in any way, you do want emergency notifications, send an email to that address, we will get you manually signed up in the meantime. You know, no one's going to lose anything as we move over, we just want to make really sure of that.
To be clear, if they've already registered for it, there's no need to redo it again.
No need to redo anything.
It will be reported.
Yep. Everything will get moved over. And then, once that's ready to go, then we'll do a huge, huge push to get more people signed up. But obviously, again, if people want to sign up, they definitely should, and probably the easiest way to do that is just to email us at emergencymanagement@southorange.org, and we'll, and we'll make sure we take care of that. That leads me a little bit into the next, which is the Public Information and Marketing Committee. We've got a couple openings there, so if anybody's interested in being involved in that, and I'll try and go back, I know we had more, I think we had just barely more submissions than there were spots open when we first started, but if there's anybody interested in Public Information and Marketing Committee, we have a couple spots open, people should definitely submit their information. We've had, we met about two weeks ago and decided that the best thing for us to do would be to kind of focus and pare down on two main projects. One of the projects is helping create basically a style guide for South Orange, so logo, branding, identity, style guide. Get all of our letterhead, all of our business cards, all of our publicity materials, getting all that stuff organized, unified, so that we can be a little bit more cohesive in the way that we brand ourselves. The other project is setting up a online citizen feedback forum, so something that allows people to submit ideas, to discuss ideas, something that is hosted by the village, allows people to submit ideas, to discuss ideas, something that is hosted by the village, perhaps moderated by this committee or a group of residents who agree to do so, and that that would be a way for us to formally kind of take online feedback and opinions from people, which is obviously really important to do, but just as important is to do it in a structure that encourages people to be productive, and encourages people to kind of work towards a solution. We want to kind of activate residents to not just point out that there's a problem, but we've got a lot of smart people in town, if there's a problem, well, do you have ideas? Can you help us find a way to get to a point where we can solve it? And when we look at these different systems, you know, I think that the board may even need to make one or two kind of policy decisions about, for example, you know, the way the White House website, you know, takes suggestions. You know, if you get a certain number of signatures, they will formally consider a policy. So I thought it might be kind of a neat idea that if we could set something up similar where, you know, you don't have to get 1,000 signatures, but 25 signatures, or 50 signatures of neighbors and friends on an idea, then that policy idea will automatically go to one of the trustee subcommittees, you know, and so it doesn't have to be, oh, well, I know this trustee, and I called him, or they're my neighbor, and I want, you know, to get in here, you know, but if we can kind of formalize it and standardize it a little bit more, and make it easier for everybody to submit, anybody to submit an idea, and to make it very clear about, well, okay, you have an idea or a complaint, at what point is this governing body going to consider those ideas, to try and take a little bit of the kind of subjectivity out of it. Almost like we do with the roads, you know, where we have a formula, and here's the formula, and here's how we pave the roads, so it's not, you know, someone calling someone up and saying, well, I've got this thing, and I want to, you know, get it heard. If we can kind of empower everybody equally, I think that would be great. I know Trustee Schnell probably want to talk to you a little bit about that. Maybe we can get you working on that specific project, too. Anyway, so again, so those are the two big projects, and then, at that point, hopefully we can knock both those out in the next two months or three months, and then move on to two, two or three more, depending on how many members we have, but, you know, I think at the beginning, we had six or seven ideas, and it's just, you know, rather take a couple out, get them done, move on to the next ones, than have a whole bunch that are ongoing. So there's that. And again, just to reiterate, if people are interested in being on that committee, and working on one of those projects, please go to the website, to the volunteering section, and put your information in, or get in contact with me or anybody up here. The machine readable data ordinance, this is something I've brought up before, and the idea here is to codify some of the best practices that we have done in South Orange for a long time, of making information and data available in a machine readable format, so that it's not a, you know, you can scan a piece of paper as a PDF, and it's an image, it's not searchable, you can't organize it, you can't pull information out of it. We want to create information that is in formats that can be put into a spreadsheet, that a search engine can get through, and then if we want to, you know, quantify, or analyze, or do anything with that data, we have the ability to do that. So we've obviously done, done that with our budget, to much accolade from many about how easy it is to find information through our budget, and we want to do that, basically, the idea is to do that with, you know, basically all the information we have. So we're working with the Citizens Campaign, the Sunlight Foundation, a couple other nonprofits, and kind of leaders in the open government world, about nailing down the best way to do that. There's about a dozen best practice ordinances that I've been looking at throughout the country, from other counties and cities that have done this, and consolidating everything into one. So we've got a few more meetings with some kind of external groups to talk about some of those issues, and then the next step, we'll be meeting with our clerk's office and our legal folks, and talking about, you know, are there monetary, are there significant monetary, you know, financial costs to doing any of these things, you know, making sure that everything jives with the Open Public Records Act and Meetings Act the way they are, just kind of doing an internal review to make sure that this is something that we can actually adopt and do, because the idea is that not only will we do this, but that then myself, some other elected officials, and some of these groups like the Citizens Campaign are gonna go around to other towns, and try and get them all to sign up by passing a similar ordinance, and hopefully if we can do that good of a job at the local level, maybe we can get the state legislature to formally upgrade the Open Public Records Act and Meetings Act, which has been a long time coming, and God bless, you know, Senator Weinberg, who's been, you know, trying for a very long time to do that, but it hasn't really, I think, taken all the points in that municipal governments are concerned about, and I think that it hasn't moved as where it should. Everyone wants to update this, but nobody really knows how, so let's kind of do a grassroots up from the local governments. Municipal technology best practices, that's something along the similar lines as the machine readable data ordinance. In fact, that ordinance is actually part of this document, but the idea is that there are some things that we do really great here in South Orange, especially as it relates to technology, and if we can tell those stories and share some of the ways that we've gotten to the place where we have, encourage other municipal governments to do the same, we should definitely do that. So part of this is creating a better way to tell the stories of our successes in a way that will, that we can give out to basically other municipal governments, and help them get up to speed too, you know, as, as we've become sort of, you know, regional and statewide leaders in some of these IT-related fields. The last piece is parking around Seton Hall and Tuxedo Park, all of that. The last board meeting, I asked our Police Department, Public Works, basically to take out, at the board's request, parking from one side of the street, and every street in Tuxedo Park, allow parking a little bit further east on the, on the, I guess, on the...
Eastbound side.
On the eastbound side of, on the north side, on the eastbound side of South Orange Ave. To allow parking a little bit further east on that side, as well as allow parking on the east side of Ward Place. So when I create a regulation like that, as, you know, an executive order, it's with a 45-day time limit, that 45th day will be October 24th, decided to let the temporary regulations expire on the 24th, so at that point, parking will no longer be allowed on Ward, and the restrictions in Tuxedo Park will also be lifted. All of the temporary, anything temporary that was done will be undone. And then what, and this is on the, for discussion a little bit later, what I'll ask the trustees to do is consider making some of these changes permanent on Ward Place, on South Orange Ave. South Orange Ave is a really easy one. And as well as look at the one, I don't know if it's varsity, the, the last street in Tuxedo Park that doesn't have any parking restrictions on it hourly at all, and then it sounded like folks were interested in two-hour restrictions there. So to basically take up some of these issues, that we decided in temporary fashion to do so in a permanent fashion, which would be passed by an ordinance. And just for any folks from Tuxedo Park that might be listening, we also have a whole bunch more two-hour parking signs to install on streets that already have two-hour parking. One of the complaints that we got throughout this process was that even in areas where there are restrictions, it's actually not, there's not enough signage, there's too much space that goes between each sign, people didn't know that there were restrictions in place, so we do have more signs, and Public Works should be putting those up any day if they're not actually up already. And so at the next meeting, the 28th, we'll hopefully consider extending or looking at some of these parking regulations, and whether we want to do them permanently or not. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I had a few items. One, again, the Village Hall relocation, the move, I'd certainly echo the President Torpey's comments. I, just across the board, the staff was fantastic in terms of just the, sort of the spirit of cooperation, everybody rising to the occasion and moving. It really went off seamlessly with really no interruptions, and we were up and running Monday morning with phones and computers and copiers, and, so I, again, a general recognition of all the staff, I'd like to particularly single out three people. One is Ed Gulyas, who is our Deputy Engineer, who for the last six months has been doing puzzle pieces and measuring every piece of furniture in every room, and what could fit together, and rearranging it, and, and has really done a great job, you know, working with every department, figuring out how many file cabinets they needed, how many linear feet of files, just a lot of work over a long period of time. Second would be Stan Wilkinson, our IT Manager, who probably had the most pressure on him, because if it didn't work, it was gonna be on Stan, so he pulled it off, he did a fantastic job, and, and that was squeezing that in with all the other projects that Trustee Levison has him working on, day and night. And then finally, Adam Lerner, our, you know, relatively new Deputy Village Administrator. Adam can tell you that probably the first day on the job, I said, hey dude, here's your first assignment, is this move. And he picked it up, he ran with it, he, you know, from coordinating and finding the movers and the state contracting, bring them in, getting quotes, finding the, you know, additional storage space at Cricklewood, he just really did an outstanding job. It was something that, that I was certainly concerned about before he got here, and, you know, even into last year, how we were gonna be able to pull this off, and he, he really did, deserves a, an enormous amount of credit for that, so. Across the board, a very good job. Logistically, we are settled in, we're on the third floor for those residents. I think we've done a pretty good job, we do have some additional signage coming, you know, it's a learning experience, we see that some people get in the lobby, and then they start looking around, so we're gonna have some additional signage at the first floor level by the elevators, some additional signage upstairs to clearly direct people. Our neighbors on the third floor have been pretty gracious in understanding people poking in, is this Village Hall? But we don't know how long that'll last, so we're, we're doing additional signage. So most of the residents hopefully should be able to find us, again, it's all of the, every department that was in Village Hall is now on the third floor in that one contiguous spot, of course, with the exception of the Parking Authority that had already previously relocated to the Baird. That kind of segues into, as everyone can see, we're now meeting here at SOPAC, the Board of Trustees Meetings, the Planning Board Meetings, the Board of Adjustment Meetings, and the Historic Preservation Commission Meetings, the ones that are required to be recorded, will all be held here in SOPAC, for the most part here on the main stage. There is one or two exceptions, it'll be done upstairs in the loft because of a prior booking commitment by SOPAC, but then, going forward, after the first month or two, we settle into our sort of the normal nightly, you know, same nights as typical, and, and pretty much always on the main stage. All the other committees, the Standing Trustees Committees, some of our Citizen Advisory Committees, the Public Information Marketing Committee, Traffic Safety, those committees will all be meeting in, we have two fairly large conference rooms in, in the new space at 76, there, there'll be room and additional chairs for the public who attend, so all those meetings will be there, and again, almost, you know, virtually all the meetings will be on the calendar, on the website, and we will include and make sure that they have the accurate locations on them. The, I had hoped, and, we met just earlier, a couple days ago, with our construction manager, and he got back to me with still some, a couple loose ends, we have another project meeting on Village Hall renovation next week, at which time we will fill in the sort of missing pieces in the budget and the timeline, and, and finalize that report, and have that to you before the next meeting, which will be a week from Monday. Next, the, for those of you, certainly those from last year will remember, the new trustees may or may not be aware of it, the state of New Jersey in the last couple, three years adopted a requirement called Best Practices Checklist, and it, it consists of 50 questions, and embedded within the questions are suggestions of how you can do certain municipal operations, ways to, you know, promote efficiency, save money, et cetera. It has evolved over the years, and there's always some new questions, old questions, and they've added a new requirement of discussing it, so, so basically, and because of the timing and when it came out, and when it had to be filed, it had to be filed on the 15th, which was Tuesday, but you're all supposed to discuss, you know, and report on it at the public meeting, we did explain to them that we had this gap because of the move, and, and also the timing of when the meeting would have been, so they were okay with us discussing it, or addressing it tonight. So just reporting that, that we, we completed it. The way it works is, out of the 50 questions, if you get at least 80%, so 40, correct, either yes, or in some cases, not applicable, that still counts, doesn't count against you, then there's no, no issue. Beyond that, then they take the, the last 5% of your state aid, if you get between a 61 and an 80, they take 20% of that live, last 5%, so you would lose 1% of your state aid, the next threshold's 2%. So there, there is, it's not an enormously punitive effect, but it's not what you want, and more to the point, you, you want to hope you're doing a good enough job that you're not down in that threshold, so. We completed ours, and, and between yeses, and either in some instances are not applicable, by way of example, there's some questions in there this time about Sandy, and did you do this with any Sandy-related contracts over $2 million? Obviously, we didn't have any. There are some that are prospective, where they introduce a concept sort of for the first time, so they don't want to punish you, not, punish you if you're not doing it, but it's a, it's a good suggestion, so you can indicate it's prospective, it's something we're looking into. So we, we came in with an 88, so that meant we had six nos, we're looking at the nos, a couple of the nos, two or three of them, and it didn't really have an option, but it's something that I was already on my radar anyway, relate to issues relating to disability and workers' comp treatment and compensation, and some of that is embedded in some of our collective bargaining agreements, so that's something that, that is obviously on the horizon to address. I would point out, one of our nos is a question, and I'll ask you right now, if you want to volunteer to help us get closer to that 100%, is, I'll have it for you in just a minute. Does your municipality require its elected officials to attend on an annual basis at least one instructional course, proof of continuing education, education credit by DLGS, covering the responsibilities and obligations of elected officials? So we had to answer that, no, but if you'd like, we can require you to do it, or if you'd like to require yourselves to do it, but I just point that one out, because that, that one is within your control. But overall, so we did complete it, there was a requirement, again, I think this year for the first time, is that in addition, historically it was always just CFOs that certified it, and now I think some of the CFOs said, well, some of this stuff isn't finance-related, why am I certifying it? So now they have a, a dual requirement for the Chief Administrative Officer, in that case myself, as well as the, the Finance Officer, so Mr. Gross and I went through it, and, and we've each certified, you know, and, and certain of them are within our respective parts, so. That's the report, it's been filed, again, it, it's a requirement, we're not losing any state aid, obviously our goal is to get better, and, and, you know, not that, that we, you know, we hadn't, but, again, some of them were tied up in some union contracts that we need to address. One, again, if you want to do the, the courses, we'll be happy to arrange them for you.
Are these courses available at the LEAK Conference?
You know, it's interesting, I, I suspect they might be, and I will look, and I will let you know. Now, again, I don't know, the way it says, does it require you, so even just voluntarily attending it, I think we still have to answer no, so unless we actually put an affirmative requirement that you each, at least once a year, have to take a class, then, then only then could we answer that, but we have certain...
I think it would be good if you could circulate that response, that filing, to all of us.
Right.
And is there like a catalog of available courses? Are they available online?
I'll look into that, again, that, that's, that was a, I'm not sure that that's a new question, I don't, I don't recall it in the past, but, so I think it may be a new one, but, but I will look into it, look into exactly, because they, they're not real clear on like, does it have to be a certain number of hours, does it have to be, just says it has to be approved by, that, so I'll look in, I'll get more information, and we can certainly entertain that one. Lastly, I did, and it was...
Wait, is this, is the entire document a public document?
Yeah, well, we, we put that on the website, sure.
Yeah, let's, let's definitely do that.
You know, with all our financial information, we'll do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then lastly, we did just receive this week, and I circulated electronically, and then you all have in your, one of the envelopes that got delivered to you today is a hard copy of the 2013 audit. Again, for the newer trustees, I don't know if you saw my email, but there's a requirement under the law that every trustee be in a position to certify, and you have to all, in original, there's no photocopies, you have to all sign the same affidavit, saying that at minimum you've reviewed the comments and recommendations. I, in my email, I did mention there usually the, I don't know, it's like the last 10 pages or so, but I gave you the exact numbers. Certainly encourage you to read the whole thing if you are so inclined, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Trustee Levison's pretty familiar with it as well, and I'm sure he'll be happy to, to address issues. But what we'd like to do, again, because this, this audit is a little bit late, there were, you know, these were issues being worked back and forth between the CFO and the auditor, but it was now delivered, but in light of that, I'd like to, you know, if at all possible, everyone has an opportunity to review at least the comments and recommendations, to be in a position to have that affidavit signed for maybe our meeting on the 28th would be.
But what we have done is that we've scheduled this for review...
The Finance Committee.
...Finance Committee meeting, and the Finance Committee will make some recommendations coming out of it as well.
Yeah, and that, particularly, and where that's particularly important, the, the Finance Committee review of it is, one of the things that, again, for the newer trustees, part of it, you're saying you read it, and that's not, you don't have any really right to, we can't change it, with the auditors, they're independent, and they say what they say, so what the facts are is what they are, unless there was an obvious mistake. But most importantly, and to Trustee Levison's point coming out of the Finance Committee is, one of the things we also have to do is develop a corrective action plan, and it has to outline and address every single comment and recommendation, what are you gonna do to make sure this doesn't happen again? And, and I certainly have some ideas in mind, and as does Trustee Levison, and some of our sort of structural changes, I think we'll address a lot of that, but, so that, again, that'll, that'll be discussed at, at Finance, out of which I think a lot of the corrective action plan will, will ultimately...
And we should invite Frank to come to that meeting as well.
Yes. That, that was all I had.
Would we be, would he be signing on the 28th?
Well, the meeting's on the 28th, but the, our clerk, I'm sure, can maintain the affidavit if you've read it before, there's no requirement that you, it's not like the signing of the Declaration, you all have to do it at the same time, you could stop in at any time. Once you've read it, if you're in a position to sign it, you could sign it, and the clerk maintains it, because I think the clerk ultimately has to certify that you all signed it. Pardon me? There you go, yeah.
Just, Walter, your microphone.
The microphone, they're just saying, speak up a little louder.
Do you want to share mine? Can you hear him when he talks loud?
No.
We're gonna share mine.
How about this is talking loud?
His button's up, I mean, the button's up, so it should be on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Rother, you, you have anything to add, other than some of the East Orange Water stuff from before?
Well, actually, other, other than the written litigation reports and reports I may have given in executive session, there are no new developments, except with respect to the Occidental case, which some of you may know as the Pusake River matter, and that matter has been monitored by my associate, Mr. Visconi, who'll give you a quick review of what's happened in that matter.
For review, there are, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection sued several corporations who had plants, industrial sites along the Raritan River that allegedly polluted the river and the, the water sources that it flows to. Those corporations and industries then sued several dozen public entities, including South Orange Village, and the, we are part of the... Joint Meeting. The Joint Meeting for sewage treatment. The Joint Meeting has taken the lead on this, and there are several public organizations that are, are working together on behalf of all of the public entities involved. At this point, there are two drafted settlements, one with all but one of the industrial and corporations, and a settlement with the third-party defendants, which are the public entities and some other corporations that were not in the original suit. suit. Those settlements, there have been public comment on them, the comments have been published by the DEP. Now, there's a procedure that between now and December, all private and public defendants will have a chance to voice their support or opposition for either settlement, and then approximately in mid-December, there will be hearings on those settlements. But for our purposes, there is a settlement drafted, I can't give a likelihood that in its current form, it will be passed, but it is something that would be acceptable, and we're hopeful that it moves through without challenge. Trustee Levison, you were also taking the ball on this.
The other part to it is that there's a second round that can come along with the EPA coming back.
Yes, that's a whole, a whole different, that's a whole different lawsuit-
Right.
...and based on a different body of law.
Right.
But stemming from the same pollution.
Importantly, we made a few, we being the public entities, had some comments for the DEP, they've responded, and we feel have adequately addressed those comments and concerns we had.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move on to the Standing Committee reports. A reminder for everybody except Trustee Rosner and Trustee Cullen, please, who did submit bullet points, updates, please, everybody submit bullet points, you can just email them to the clerk or myself for your committee updates. Trustee Levison?
Yeah, I thought this, Ellen had done that. There were three items that we had from the last meeting, one of them is that we still have not signed, to my knowledge, a SLA with the CCR, and I assume that we're still holding payment pending that SLA. The other is, is that we were going to talk about Rescue Squad and looking for resolution, possibly, that would ask Maplewood for coverage of our direct expenses for runs that we make into Maplewood.
I can speak to that. One of the things that I want to do is just make sure that whatever proposal we put before Maplewood is just something based in data and the facts that we can get from the squad. I've been working with their, is he the captain now, Alex Dan?
Mm-hmm.
And he's provided a lot of background information as to the numbers of calls that they go on into Maplewood. He also outlined the process by which South Orange gets dispatched to the Maplewood mutual aid calls. One thing I found very interesting, and it's a real testament to our Rescue Squad, is that they, even during the day, they have members who are on backup, and so if they're in South Orange and there's a call, they go, even though they're not, yeah, including our village president. So there's, there's a lot of components-
I could have told you that.
There you go. Thank you for doing that. There's a lot, and I just want to make sure we structure it well. I have had some preliminary conversations with Maplewood, just to see what type of information they would need moving forward, and I'm pretty confident that if we just outline everything, hopefully, we'll get a good response, but hopefully, by the next meeting, we can set up something with Maplewood, and I'm going to be circulating a draft proposal to the Board of Trustees shortly, and I'm hoping that that proposal will also be the basis for conversations with Seton Hall as well. I think between Maplewood and Seton Hall University, those are two of the largest groups that are benefiting from our volunteer squad.
The other was discussion about Everbridge and public stuff, and I think that was covered by Alex in his discussion. I had a couple other open items, we had some bills list holes, are they still being held?
I will have to check, I think there were a few that you still had.
There were five of them that-
Okay, I'll check with the Finance tomorrow.
And that, we had discussion about having bills listed at every board meeting, rather than just once a month, would help our process of paying the bills more expeditional, so-
Yeah, and I've begun that discussion with the, our contracted finance service, that's certainly a practice I recommend, it's one I've always done before, I think it, I mean, ultimately, pay the same number of bills, but you don't have this crunch all at once, and it doesn't, you don't have as much time in between, so in particular, if you miss a meeting, then all of a sudden, now you've got creditors calling you. So I certainly support that, and we'll work with our Finance Department to see if we can implement that.
And lastly, I hope that by the next meeting, that we have a resolution for CFO finance replacement.
We will, we will have that for the 28th.
Okay. As well as a comment on technology, is that part of the process of moving from Village Hall to 76 South Orange Avenue, some of the technology that has been implemented is that we're currently using voice-over IP as our telephone system, and we're in the process of doing electronic fax, but eliminating our physical fax machines. These are all part of the IT implementation, our, let me call it data center, is now in the firehouse, supporting all of the various locations within the village.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford is not here for legal and personnel.
We need to set budget workshop at this.
I don't know when the last legal committee was, the next one is-
Be on the 28th.
So we may have got the last update in the last meeting.
Yeah, we have not had a meeting since the last meeting, and it'll be the 28th before.
Well, we're going to have the interviews, the interviews, clerk interview?
They're scheduled, yeah, I guess in her absence, we can report that we had advertised and received applications for, and have now scheduled some interviews for the vacant village clerk position.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Committee, I think, Trustee Cullen, you're going to be Trustee Rosner?
I will. I was going to hold up his little picture right here, but no, I can't remember where it is. So on behalf of Trustee Ros-
Just sit there for 40 years.
Little mustache right here. Two of the larger items that we finished was, going back several meetings ago at the Planning Board, I believe it was, discussing about what a live-work unit constituted. So the committee discussed it, we passed it along to our planner for review, our engineer, and also went back to Jonathan Rose to see if they had any substantive changes, of which they didn't. So we do have a definition that we're going to be recommending to the board, and this will require an amendment to our redevelopment plan. It's not super time-sensitive, so I'll circulate this out to the group as a whole, and if there's any other additional comments, it's pretty well-written, it's not too complex, and then hopefully, we can get that approved before the end of the year. The other thing that we discussed was, and this was previously put in the budget, was the master plan request for proposals. Ellen had sent around a draft that was previously done, I believe, several months ago, for comments from the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I think where we left off was that this board, at the time, agreed that we were going to put this out for RFP, and that we would be working in conjunction with the Planning Board on it. So right now, the ball's in our court, just to provide any feedback on what the RFP would have in it, and so we can also circulate that to the rest of the board members for comment. Trustee Rosner is complete.
Thank you, Trustee Cullen Rosner.
And now, on to-
And now, on to Trustee Cullen.
The real Trustee Cullen, all right. Public Safety Committee, we had our meeting, hmm, on September 24th. I circulated to everybody, we're just kind of in a weird calendar, where I'm giving you minutes from our last-last meeting, because our most recent meeting minutes weren't approved. So we met on Tuesday, September 24th. Earlier, maybe a couple months ago, I circulated the ICMA report, ongoing updates. I really appreciate everybody who's giving me updates, we have that Excel spreadsheet that I'm working off of right now. At the last meeting, I kind of gave an overview of the things that have been done or in progress, and the most recent ones are highlights to two other committees. First, I'm going to give, what, to Howard Levison, Trustee Levison, are you over there right now? A very big thank you on the work that he has been doing on the computer-aided dispatch and the records management system. That's something that Public Safety wasn't working on previously in conjunction with IT, and so Trustee Levison has kind of looped me in, shown me what's going on, on that front, and I find it to be very thoughtful and amazing, the amount of work that he's put into it, and I'm pretty sure the police department's going to be thrilled with what's in store for them. And then the next thank you goes to the DPW Committee, Trustee Clark. Earlier today, it was circulated from our village engineer that an RFP is being prepared for an architect, that was the one item that went to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. So I think we're knocking off the largest issues. Still on the administrative to-do list is the Scheduling and Table of Organization. Once that is complete, I think we're going to be able to close out this report by the end of the year, which was my hope, was just basically providing a full response to the recommendations made by ICMA, and just posting that on the website and closing it out. The other thing that's going to be fantastic is, we're going to be doing an annual report for Public Safety, and we're working with the Neighborhood Watch organization to also have some sort of town hall meeting, so that once we kind of show all the highlights of what's occurred over the past year, and it's something that I complain about all the time, even with this Board of Trustees, is I don't think that our departments really take time to recognize all the, all the great things that they've done over the year, and by having an annual report and compiling the data and showing our residents what our public safety departments all do, inclusive of our Rescue Squad, that's a great way for them to review what's transpired over the past year, and then during an annual town hall meeting, they'll be able to ask questions and provide any feedback. Prescription Drug Box Initiative, we did discuss this, we had a presentation two months ago from an organization who wanted us to consider having a permanent drop box. I think there were some concerns about the technology and perhaps even the insurance, and where we ended up, the committee recommendation is to do an annual pickup, and let's just see how that goes first. There was enough concerns expressed by our police department that we kind of just met in the middle and decided that Maplewood already has one, once a year, the county has one, and if we have one, we'll stagger those dates, and during that annual drop-off, they will also send in community relations into different senior homes to do pickups as well.
Just a point of clarification with that, once a year, so Maplewood does it one year, then the following year, South Orange does it twice a year?
No, we both do it in the same year, so that there's two pickups during the same year, between South Orange and Maplewood. Yes, there we go, the two towns, perfect. The other item is, and I'll be probably sending a memo to the board, is that we had approached the police department about making some improvements inside of headquarters, and at the suggestion of our village president, I spoke to some of the union representatives to see what ideas they had, and so there's, not a lengthy to-do list, but there's a few suggestions that they made, relating to some of their cabinets and their desks, and the PBA earlier in the year had built a room within headquarters, so that during incremental weather conditions, and at a time when they don't need to be sleeping in cars, there's a room available for them to rest, and so we're probably looking at some furniture and cabinets and a couple desks. So I'll probably send that out to the board, these were the short-term things that we want to do inside headquarters. The other thing that moved to at least the top of my list was radio communications. One thing that I found, speaking especially to a lot of our officers, was this concern about their radios, and their radios not always being able to be in touch with dispatch. This goes back probably earlier in the year, there's prior meeting minutes from Public Safety where this issue came up, and it's certainly something we need to address. So in discussing this with our village administrator, I thought he put forth a good idea of, this is perhaps something that we just need to study for the entire town, see, not just police, but also some of our squad members have brought up this as well. So we will be preparing an RFP for that, and we also spoke, Public Safety spoke to Finance and IT about this as well, and we're on the same page. So the sooner we can move on that, the better.
Can I interrupt for one second about that? The RFP for that, we had a meeting with the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department, we were approached by Chief Markey, they're putting in some grants, applications for a particular system, that was actually the vendor that we met with-
Mm-hmm.
...that's using a state, what is the piece, I forgot the technical name.
It's like P-25.
No. Anyway, and so there's a, seems to be a large coordinated effort on behalf of fire departments in Essex County to basically do this. Everyone has just got outdated infrastructure, and what the state systems allow, just for the benefit of anybody watching, is that instead of having to maintain your own radio infrastructure, which is incredibly expensive to do, and we're at a point where we either need to invest a lot of money into this old infrastructure, or figure something else out to do, that basically, what you do is you buy the radios themselves, the portable radios and the mobile radios, and you pay a fee. Once you buy the equipment, you pay a yearly fee of, it's like $35 a year or something-
Per inch.
Yeah, per radio, and that gives you access to the statewide digital network.
But that was Motorola, wasn't it?
It was Motorola, yeah, Motorola, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're obviously kind of the, you know, 80% of the market or whatever. But anyway, so the idea being that we could maybe step back from our own, you know, our own capital ownership of some of the infrastructure, and pay a fee, and have someone else, and have the state maintain it. So before you write up any RFPs, just touch base with Chief Markey and Dan Cohen at the Rescue Squad, because they are finalizing some grant applications together for this one particular system.
Okay.
So basically, if it looks like, if that goes through, then going out and doing other things, you know, might be a duplication. So I would just, and that was just something that I learned pretty recently. So if you just, if you want to make sure to coordinate with them and-
Mr. Lewis actually told us about that, so we'll make sure that we coordinate with that.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
That would work across, from the police department, the fire department, to the Rescue Squad, you'd all be able to use it, because I know one of the things the chief had said in the last meeting was that there are only a certain number of channels, and they have crossover problems, and- Well, that's what we wanted the consultant to do.
Okay. Yeah, but yes, there are some issues, because now you're going to this larger state system, and you can't, you know, the one nice thing about do-it-yourself is you can kind of do almost whatever, I mean, it's tightly regulated by the FCC, but you can, you have a little more flexibility in, well, we want 1,000 channels, if you can fit it into your spectrum that you're allocated. So you'd get less channels technically, but the way the system is designed, there are talk groups and things that allow you to create kind of like fake channels within channels, so you can have all the police on a talk group within a channel, so even though you're on the same channel, because the radios are all digital, they're able to talk to only certain radios. And then if you want, and then if you need to switch off, and you say, okay, I've got to talk to everybody, you could basically just change the setting on the radio, and now you're talking to everybody on the channel. So it's, that's definitely a consideration, but the cool part is that the technology that we use for radios is so old.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's like, almost like simple, I mean, it's crazy. And now, these digital systems and the radios actually, that, that they sell that work on the system are dual-band, so they work on the new system and can work on an old VHF or UHF frequency. So the nice part is, is that our medical dispatcher, which is Union County, that we transfer our medical calls to and dispatches our Rescue Squad, they're already switching over to this system, and what they might be able to do is actually provide us with a few units for the Rescue Squad. So what we could actually do is get a few people started with the system and have radios that work on both systems. So you'd have one radio that works on our older system and works on the newer system, and we can start to test it, make sure it works, before we actually go, you know, headfirst and do the whole thing.
You don't have to worry about the first responders not being able to communicate with each other, then?
No, they'd be, they'd be able to use the same, they'd have a radio that they would have access to the new network and to the old network.
Right, they had new and old, so-
Yeah, so basically, it's all, all of ours are on a VHF system right now, and, you know, it's just different channels within that. So these radios would have two bands, they would have one band, which is on the new digital network, and they'd have another band, which is a VHF band. So you'd still be able to switch it, basically, you know, switch it over and say, okay, I'm going to talk to everybody, you know, for some reason, the new system isn't working, and I'm going to switch it over and talk to everybody on the old system. So the idea being that we could do two, kind of have our feet on both sides for some period of time, and then, once we move all the way in, then we can decide to get radios that are less expensive and only have one band.
And in fact, we're looking at using our Cisco environment as well, because you can link the two of them together, so that you have smartphones that can be integrated as part of that process as well.
Yeah, the state network is, yeah, the thing that they're rolling out is pretty cool.
I read a little bit about it, I got a little confused, which is why I like RFPs.
Totally, yeah, so, yeah, just make sure to coordinate, so that grants aren't going out in one direction, the RFPs are going out in the other direction.
Absolutely, you got it.
Thanks.
And lastly, and I should have put this in the announcements, we're going to do a community cleanup and car wash on Sunday, October 27th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM at police headquarters. If I get you an announcement, could you post that on the village website? And so basically, what we're going to do is clean out the back lot, do some weeding, some cleaning, we're going to wash some of the police vehicles, and we're going to work with, hopefully, DPW on some beds in the front. So it should be nice, I think the Seton Hall Student Government Association and their ROTC program will be joining us as well, in addition to our Neighborhood Watch group. So if you're interested, come join. I'm going to fly through Irvington Avenue, this is the longest report ever. So I know sometimes it's hard getting volunteers, not in this case, with the Irvington Avenue Quarter Advisory Committee, it's not, in fact, 23 applications- With the Irvington Avenue Quarter Advisory Committee, it's not, in fact, 23 applications. We have bumped up officially to 25 applications. So it is a little challenging figuring out what to do. One commitment that at least the trustees involved so far have made is that anybody who's not formally appointed to this committee will still be a part of a working group and we welcome everybody's participation. Where myself and Trustee Rosner left off is what we would like to do is go ahead and get this down. We're not going to interview 23 people. As part of the application process, we got, or 25 rather, we've received people's resumes. We've met a lot of people, so we'd like to get this up and running. So by the next meeting, we'll probably be making a recommendation as to which people would be formally a part of the committee that we created via resolution. The next thing is we have the relationship with the Schum Market Research Center. And I thank the administration for helping us develop a service level agreement with them to defer some of the costs. A lot of large corporations and large nonprofits use the Schum Market Research Center, and it can range anywhere from a couple thousand dollars to tens of thousands of dollars because they do significant work. In this particular instance, they dedicated an entire class to us to focus on three different projects, one being with business owners, one being with residents, and one being the Seton Hall community. We're getting incredible value so far. And so the service level agreement proposal is for $2,500. I'll send that out to the Board of Trustees and hopefully we'll have a resolution at the regular meeting. And if there's any questions or comments regarding that, please feel free to shoot them to me. We've had officially two walkthroughs, one by the Market Research Center, and we've also looped in our Development Committee. Both of those groups, I think, enjoyed the process, had a good time with us. And we've also officially finished three focus groups. That's where people are brought into their market research room and they were asked questions, they provided feedback. And this Tuesday, we're going to be hearing presentations from the student groups, which I'm super jazzed about. Lastly, the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. This is just a short update. As you remember from the ICMA report, one of the things that public safety was tasked with was doing comprehensive traffic safety analysis of the village. And so once I kind of outlined what the Traffic Safety Subcommittee of Public Safety was working on, speaking with the Transportation Advisory Committee Chair, we found a lot of duplicate efforts. And the membership on Transportation Advisory goes up, goes down, and then we have a lot of people on Traffic Safety, so there was no point for us to do both. So I'll be bringing forward to the board a resolution, redefining the Transportation Advisory Committee would likely be Transportation and Traffic Safety. And then we'll do all of it together.
That's good.
I'll go back to my vanilla latte now.
Like the consolidation of committees, that's a good thing.
I love consolidating.
Well, we added one tonight and now we consolidated one. So every meeting, basically, the goal, we have to be even with the number of committees we have by the end.
I'm sorry, I forgot one last thing. I just wanted to also say thank you for the village hall move. I heard the feedback from residents was that it was like a very seamless transition and so definitely echo what the village president said earlier. Fantastic job.
Okay.
Earned Adam a seat at the big table.
Yay.
For today. Trustee Clark.
I'd like to start by thanking Steve for getting my microphone working.
I will.
So Public Works and Infrastructure. Right, that is a very relative, thanks. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, we actually had our meeting this morning. So I will actually do what Trustee Colum did and I will give you the bullet points from the approved minutes from the previous meeting. So some of this will be a reminder. We did go through a couple of, well, we followed through on the issue of the Luddington Brook overflow. And we are making, I'm glad to say we're making some headway there. Very recently, our code enforcement and DPW officials met with their counterparts, well, code enforcement met with counterpart in West Orange. DPW is going to be doing that in the near future because some of our water issues, stormwater issues are coming from West Orange, being further up the hill. But we are moving forward with that. We also touched on the Pump House Bridge, the new bridge building, and that was brought onto the September 23rd meeting, which you may remember. Let's see, also the Police Department Building. We did begin work with developing the RFP, which you should have all seen come through your inboxes today, and hopefully you can take a look at that and especially Public Safety Chair comment where necessary and legal comment where necessary. Another issue was Roway River Maintenance along the river, which I actually want to give a shout out to the members of the River Greenway Committee and also to the many volunteers from Seton Hall University who came out on the 26th, I'm sorry, the 28th of September to help with the weeding of the river. And we have two more, two more dates where we were going to be taking advantage of Seton Hall University volunteers with the River Greenway Committee members acting as guidance on that one to help try to maintain that particular part of the river corridor. So thanks to them for that. Another item we touched on, which came across the last meeting, was the South Orange Avenue County Lighting Project, which some of you might remember, that's the county project that are going through the S-curves of South Orange Avenue and their request for additional lighting to be paid for. And Barry, I just wanted to follow up. One of the things we'd agreed to do last time was that the administrator would be basically officially replying to that memo from the county saying, thanks, but no thanks.
Oh, we have.
Okay, okay. So that did happen.
We weren't alone.
All right. Is there any chance I can get that?
Well, and actually, an update on that is there is a, we did get a response back and there's some possibility of the county installing, they were already going to pay for the lights. Our concern was the ongoing...
The ongoing expense, yeah.
They may, they're considering picking that up, in which case then it's kind of a no-brainer, but...
Okay. Yeah. So, and one other, one other item that popped up during that meeting, also to be discussed to some degree with the Public Safety Chair, was a, we were discussing the property watch list with code enforcement. And one of the things that Tony Grancy brought up is that he would like to be able to coordinate better with the police department and their watch lists to have, to have those two lists dovetail where it makes sense so that each knows what the other's done. Because obviously, certain properties have crossover problems and it benefits both of them to know that. So I've reached out to Stan Wilkinson to begin work on that with them. That is about it for that.
Thank you. Trustee Shaw.
All right. As we all agree, this is the Fund Committee.
Now you've got that expectation a little upset.
That's all right, we'll come through.
All right, all right.
Singing a song or something, Steve.
Before I begin with the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee meetings, actually, I do want to recognize sort of an associate. We had Newcomers Day event, and I do want to make sure we publicly recognize a couple of people that were involved, including the Community Relations Committee, Janice and Larry, who chair that, as well as the Public Library, the South Orange Public Library, Melissa Kopecky and her team, and all the folks who participated. We had the Village Alliance and many business owners and a number of organizations around town that made that what I think was a very successful and a good event, not only for newcomers, but this year was called Newcomers Allcomers Day. And I think that was a successful, all at the same day, there was also an art fair next to the town. So that was a especially good day. Moving on to the Rec and Cultural Affairs Committee, our September meeting actually had, because of conflicts, had to get postponed, so we met Wednesday, October 2nd. And at that meeting, also in terms of minutes to go over some of the things, there were a couple successes that were, we discussed that had happened, the first time, the outdoor movies on top of the concerts in July, this August, we had the movies. And then perhaps one of the most successful universally accepted events for happiness was the playing around South Orange, the pianos that were placed throughout South Orange. And I think just about everybody enjoyed that, whether they actually played or listened or just saw the well-decorated pianos. The street fair was not as universally liked, and I think as part of that, I think that's something that we need to discuss for future years. There was a fair amount of attendance, the, actually, we maxed out the number of vendors that participated. There was some discussion on the selection and the choice of the types of offerings and comparing that to other events in other regional areas. So before we go forward and decide whether we'll do that again next year and in what format, I think that's going to require further discussion and probably this year involve the Village Center Alliance, perhaps for them to actually take the lead, as they did not do that this year. Cultural Affairs, so that was sort of in the past. Going forward and currently, actually, the current, at the current exhibit in the gallery is called Jazz Stories, and it had a terrific opening with over 300, I'm sorry, over 200 people coming through. There was also an associated art talk on October 10th that was curated by Seton Hall students at the Barrett. And this coming weekend, in association with the Jazz, is the Giants of Jazz here, I believe, at SOPAC this Saturday night. The master honoree is Gary Bartz. And then four times in the next year, we got Jazz in the Loft upstairs to continue that. In terms of courses, there are 16 art classes this fall, and believe it or not, the number one attended or event that we signed up for class is Good Time Math Gang. And that's a real success because two local math teachers have completely volunteered their time, which makes it a very affordable program. And it's fully enrolled with 22 students and six on a waiting list. In terms of the recreation program, the fall program is underway, and that looks also to be very successful as that's already kicked off. The big issue in, on the recreation side is some capital projects. As many of you know, some of the tennis courts are, especially the ones over at Cameronfield, are in a bit of disrepair, and we need to consider what the future of that looks like as well as several other infrastructure, playgrounds and some of our other recreational facilities. We're going to have to do a pretty extensive review on those capital projects, including facilities like the Barrett itself. So we got some interesting things upcoming. The next meeting will be next Thursday morning and everybody's invited.
Okay, thank you.
The fun has to stop at some point.
Does it?
Fun never stops.
All right, so we've got a couple discussion items before we adjourn our conference agenda and go back into executive session. The first is the higher education zoning bills, which are A2586 and S1534. Trustee Levison, do you want to?
Yeah, I had requested that we had a resolution that we are not in support of that bill and in support of the league's opposition to that bill. This is a bill that's reared its ugly head again, which allows bypassing of our zoning by private institutions, private educational institutions in land use. I think this is something that will be burdensome upon the villages or townships, municipalities that have universities, or the towns don't even have to have the university, where they can acquire space, they come off the tax rolls and bypass the zoning restrictions that we have within the particular area.
Right. And the history here is that public entities, other governments are exempt from local zoning laws. So as you go up the scale, the county, state, federal government, they are exempt from our zoning laws. And the case that really started all this way back in the day was Rutgers. And so the state education institutions are exempt, although it's pretty clear, at least from my reading of the State Supreme Court opinion, that that was afforded solely for the reason that they are public entities and makes no mention of higher education or anything like that. The same way the Turnpike Authority is exempt, or New Jersey Transit, or any organization like that. And then there are some in the higher education world, which I would too, if I was in the higher education world, lobby for, you know, zoning exemptions for your organization. Why wouldn't you want that? It would certainly make life easier. But really, it's coming out of some communities, I think New Brunswick, Piscataway, a couple others, where there was major, major fights between local zoning boards and the higher education institutions, where people thought that the boards were being, you know, incredibly prohibitive, you know, just for the sake of doing so. And, you know, and so we've written, I'll bring the resolution back, and I also wrote a letter to all of our state legislators and spoke to a number of them personally as well, of our strong opposition to this, not because we don't love colleges in Seton Hall and the universities should be able to pursue economic development opportunities in whatever way they can, but that they should have to follow the rules, just like, just like everybody else does, except for other higher governments, which if they, we could require they follow the rules, I think we'd probably all love that. But that's just not the way that that works. So anyway, so we'll bring that resolution for the 28th.
Can I just add something real quick?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah, please, I know this is a field that you are well familiar with.
I've been fighting this baby for a while. Love Seton Hall, but this is probably one of the worst land use bills I've seen in a while. I think we can certainly...
Can we just have Trustee Davis forward on the, okay.
Yes, I would like to recognize Trustee Davis Ford at 10:24 PM.
I do want to spend just a couple minutes on this because we haven't discussed kind of an approach that I think is different from what the bill and just fighting the bill does. There is a problem that exists in higher education. While I'm adamantly opposed to this bill to recognize that the problem doesn't exist, it exists in all the different communities that have private colleges. We need to figure out how to address that. Bills like this generally get brought up because there is a need and a desire to improve the current situation. And I can even say, as a resident and as a member of the Board of Trustees now, watching some of our statutory bodies, our independent bodies, and how they interact with Seton Hall, I feel like we can do a lot better. Conversations like that aren't happening right now between municipalities and their universities, which is why this problem continues to exasperate itself. We're not working together. Quite frankly, I'm not really sure if our volunteers on our boards right now understand the magnitude of what this is, is if we don't change the way that we do business with these private universities, what we will see is a bill like this getting passed, if not now, in the immediate future. So I just wanted to open up a discussion of how the board feels that maybe we could facilitate some type of conversation outside of, you know, a normal board meeting between our volunteers, our, you know, our land use experts, Seton Hall University, and show the state that it doesn't take a bill like this to get the type of cooperation that they're looking for. That's something I'd certainly welcome. And I feel like universities have only moved farther away from wanting to work with these planning boards and these boards of adjustment. I think we can do better and I think it can actually start here. Any thoughts?
Well, I think part of the issue is that they are tax-exempt. And it ends up being that the rest of the population is really paying for their services that the villages or municipalities are providing to them. We have problems with collecting pilots from Seton Hall currently. And as well as that they absorb a lot of services from the village in the support of the university. And I think there should be something, we tried at one time of having a public safety fee associated to the tuition, which of course didn't pass in the state level. But I think something like that would help towards ameliorating some of the issues that exist between the university and the town.
Well, we really can't be taking into consideration the pilots when we're looking at land use applications. That's the problem, is that we hold on to these kind of, the areas that are not so easily fixed, and then we apply it towards, you know, a process by which we should be very objective, moving it along as quickly as possible. And that friction exists in all these different communities, and it's still not being addressed. Whether it's Seton Hall or other colleges, there's a larger issue at play here. The state is basically saying, like, we have these small communities stopping large progress, these universities serving a greater good for the state of New Jersey. And South Orange and 14 other communities are going to be on the losing end of the stick unless we find out a better alternative.
You know what's interesting is that it's almost like an eminent domain type of scenario in the way you just framed it, that the states are looking at these colleges with the protection of... that they have of serving the greater good. But recently, and I will rely on counsel to share with it, you know, several years ago, there was a restriction on what municipalities could do on private property owners regarding imminent domain decisions. But if you look at the colleges and the universities, and they have seemingly not the same limitations or restrictions, or maybe are having the opportunity to be able to be unfettered in any of their expansion, despite, at the expense of small municipalities, it's interesting dichotomy there.
And trustee Calm, you know, definitely, you know, I think we've tried to, and I've certainly made clear in my correspondence and communications with legislators, that, you know, we are very, very much interested in having conversations about how we can improve relationships, how we can improve the workflow. You know, we see their economic development and growth as a benefit to our community. And so if maybe we can have more of a discussion about that here, you know, of even what we could do in South Orange to do better with Seton Hall, is that something that we could, especially considering trustee Rosner's not here, let's assign something to his committee?
No, I would love for that. I guess my question is, perhaps from Mr. Rothen, what role, we generally stay out of the planning board issues and all that, we can't, at one point, I wanted to actually go speak at the meeting, and then I realized it's a little inappropriate to do that. What can we do to facilitate a conversation between us, who's working on these type of bills right now, and trying to represent the village, and then making our, you know, statutory boards understand what it is we're trying to accomplish?
Well, there is an annual process that's required, where the land use boards have to report to you annually about problems that they face and such things. Typically, those reports are made in writing, but I don't see a problem with having a conversation with them annually over issues that they have, and perhaps issues that you may have also in the application of your land use ordinances as you're seeing them applied.
Would anything prohibit us from having trustees, members of those boards, and also representatives of Seton Hall, having a conversation if we publicly noticed it? Or how could we go about making it bigger?
I'm not so sure that a conversation with a particular property owner would be appropriate.
Well, the problem is, this is the property owner that this bill is addressing.
Yeah, well, I think if you talk to other property owners, they might have similar complaints, or complaints that are, you know, bordering on the legitimate, in terms of how the land use ordinances are being applied. I practice land use law every day, and I find that land use ordinances that appear very similar in their written form, when you sit before or stand before a planning board or zoning board, can be applied very, very differently. I've been before boards where the members never saw a variance that they liked, and routinely turned them down, when, as a matter of fact, ordinance, variances are there for the very purpose of permitting some exception to the application of the ordinance, but that's never observed. So you will see a great variation from board to board and from member to member in any board as to how they apply their ordinances. So that's an inherent problem in the way land use is structured. But as I say, I don't think that there's a problem in having that annual conversation that the municipal land use law requires, be in person and have conversations about it. I would be hesitant to bring in a particular property owner into that conversation.
Maybe that could be a separate meeting. I just do want to, this comes personally from me, because I've been in Trenton, we've been fighting this bill for a long time, wearing a different hat, not as a member of the Board of Trustees, but the legislature can basically outline, those who are the biggest supporters of this bill can tell us what's going on in South Orange. They say South Orange specifically, Seton Hall, these applications, it took this long, and you're telling me, you know, I'm not able to show them progress yet on what we've done to actually take the concerns to heart and try and modify in a way that's more productive between us and the university. I recognize there's a problem. And the sooner we can have a conversation with some of these land use boards, and maybe just have, you know, brainstorming on what we can do next to show that we don't need a bill like this in order to work a little bit more productively with a major, you know, private institution in our backyard.
By the way, there is another dynamic at work here with universities, institutions of higher education, and that is typically, those institutions are somewhat at war with their residential neighbors.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And anytime that they have an application pending before a land use board, their neighbors are out in force. And I have never seen a land use board that isn't swayed to some considerable degree by objection from surrounding neighbors. So that 365-day-a-year exchange between neighbors and colleges spills over periodically when there's a land use application, and it does affect it.
So maybe, I mean, Mr. Rothen, would you have similar concerns about members of this governing body or members of the village government meeting with specific landowners, one piece, and then another piece somewhat disconnected, would be this governing body meeting with land use boards?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that, and one of the things that you might want to look at is at the complaints that Seton Hall may have in the application of particular ordinances, because there may be some things that you can do to amend those ordinances so that, at least in the mind of Seton Hall, they're being applied more realistically.
Okay. Mr. President, I like your idea. If you can refer this to planning and zoning, I'll work with trustee Rosner, and we'll touch base with Mr. Rothen to see if everything we're doing is kosher, because I, we can't influence those boards, I don't intend to, but I do think we need to have a discussion about this with them.
Yep.
Okay.
But that doesn't usurp us passing that resolution?
No, definitely, we'll bring the resolution still, yeah.
And actually, quite frankly, you don't even need to pass it. It was already passed by the governing body, just reforward it to where it is now. It was sent to Assembly Higher Education, it was referred to Assembly Budget. We have something on the books right now against this.
Was that this year, though?
Yeah, February of this year.
Okay.
Why do I know that?
If it was from a last calendar year, it would make sense to do again, but if we did it in February, we can just take the same thing.
It was this year.
And, you know, the problem is, in the way our land use laws are structured, the evening force is supposed to be the court system, you know, prerogative actions. Once someone is unhappy with the decision, they can take it to the Law Division and ultimately to the appellate division if they so choose, but that's a very onerous way for a property owner to seek relief for a worthy project.
I think also, though, if I'm understanding what trustee Calm is aiming at, is that that's an adversarial way of...
Of course, yeah, understood.
And what she's trying to do is keep that from happening to begin with by dialogue ahead of time.
Yep, understood, understood.
I like when you speak, I'll read halfway.
But I just made the point that that's the escape valve that's built into the system, and it's not a terribly good one. It's not a terribly good one in terms of moving good projects and keeping, you know, folks in the neighborhood happy.
Okay.
And I think from a 30,000-feet level, you know, there's probably not a lot of misunderstanding about the fact that in this country, there's a lot of bureaucracy to economic development, and that there's a reason why, you know, we don't have high-speed rail, and we don't have a lot of other things that a lot of other Western industrialized countries do have, and that, you know, our incentive structure seems to be stacked against the person trying to build. You know, obviously, you want to balance, you know, environmental regulations with the benefits of economic development, but, you know, there's certainly some in an academic and political setting who argue we've gone too far on one side, and, you know, it's always worth thinking about, well, how do we, as one local government with one jurisdiction, you know, play into kind of that larger dialogue?
Home rule, particularly in New Jersey, is well established.
Yes. Great. I think...
And speaking of it, this next item?
Oh, well, I think we actually went over most of this before in my update, that on the 24th, all of the temporary regulations that were put in place will expire. We've been working, you know, communicating with Seton Hall, you know, they're, I guess as part of the update I didn't make before, that, you know, they've finished the parking lot, the temporary parking lot on campus, and that the expectation from our perspective of Seton Hall is that that temporary space on campus, as well as some of the adjustments they've made with having contractors parking off-campus and getting shuttled to campus and opening up some of those spaces, and as the number of students that need parking declines slowly as the year goes on, that as these temporary measures that were put in place expire, that everything should still be fine. And we'll certainly make sure to reiterate the fact that that gate in Tuxedo Park absolutely cannot be opened. I think that, I don't think that's going to happen again, I think we've been pretty clear with them, the concern that we have, you know, on behalf of our residents. And then obviously, the long-term, you know, component of that solution is the expansion of the parking deck that was approved. So hopefully, that will take care of this problem for many, many years in the future. But I don't think at this point there's much more to update, I guess.
Let me just say, for the, for Tuxedo Park in particular, I have been speaking with them about some longer-term parking restrictions that they wanted after this expired, and specifically, WELMA did a survey of the residents, so right now, they're kind of working together to highlight areas that they would like the Board of Trustees to adjust. So before we kind of nail that down, I wouldn't want the board to take any action on any ordinance until I kind of get through that process with them first.
I think that's really good, because we, I saw some emails from residents who were, had the exact opposite wish of some of the residents, they are not happy with the restriction of parking on the street. And we had a similar situation a couple of years ago by the Duck Pond, where we heard some vocal residents, and we listened to them, we put together an ordinance to restrict parking, and then we had another group of neighbors in the area who were completely unhappy with it. So I think that this process of doing a survey and getting a comprehensive feedback about what people want and expect and figure that's important for the quality of life in their neighborhood regarding parking is a good thing to do.
He's not picking you up on that.
I'm sorry.
Get closer, please.
Oh.
Microphone. He's giving us the signal.
I'm not going to repeat it.
I think there was some additional comments at the Parking Authority meeting about the ripple effect of the parking restrictions going into Montrose. Mark, do you want to say anything about that?
That's a no.
I can't see.
As he said no.
No?
If that's okay, then Public Safety/Transportation will take that and bring it back to the board. We'll have recommendations likely by the next conference agenda.
Okay. Great. And the last item is our Central Business District Redevelopment Plan Amendment to designate side streets to allow additional uses. Mr. Lewis, do you want to?
Yeah, this is a subject that's been bounced around for a while, but I do think most of the new trustees are relatively up to speed on it, but it's something we want to kind of get moving again. Basically, this relates to certain of the, currently, on the first floor, anywhere in the Central Business District is essentially only retail and certain banks, financial institutions, et cetera. And there was an effort, historically, prior to 2007 or '08, there were certain uses permitted in those first-floor spaces. There was a decision then, I think a recommendation from Main Street, ultimately led to a change in the ordinance that then prohibited, returned it to only retail. I think that the vision plan may have played a role, there was some expectation that certain retail was going to move down some of the side streets, we're principally looking at Scotland, Vos, there might be a couple other areas. The planner, Susan Gruel, is trying to work on, and I've seen some drafts and had some back and forth with her. But the purpose tonight is, particularly with new trustees, and I don't know that we've ever really even sort of gotten a straw pull from all of the members to hopefully get some direction in terms of putting together. It's done by ordinance, it's a plan amendment, it's not really zoning ordinance, so it's amendment to the redevelopment plan, because that is the redevelopment district, with the thought being that on particularly some of those side streets, that, you know, you basically have a block, and then you're out of any commercial district, it has not proven to be amenable to any retail. There's been vacant spaces for approaching five years in some cases, because retail tenants, just, it's not attractive, there's space on South Orange Avenue. So the purpose of the discussion is to kind of get the sense of the board and get some direction to, you know, have that, ideally, if we can have that prepared, and then have it on the agenda for introduction. It would then have to go for a statutory referral to the planning board, they would report back, and then we'd have a public hearing and adoption like any other ordinance. So kind of throw it out there for discussion, try and gauge the sense of the board. Anyway...
Who put this on the agenda? How did it, okay, because we talked about it in planning and zoning, and it wasn't reported out of committee, like, we touched on it twice already, and the idea was, we would do or consider this as a part of all zoning, and that it wasn't going to be just these two streets at once.
Well, I don't know that it's just any two particular streets, that there may be more than two, but the idea is ones that are not fronting on South Orange Avenue, there's a couple in Valley. Now, in terms of out of committee, and I don't know what you mean, do it with all zoning, I'm not sure what that means. What is all zoning? Are we going to redo our entire zoning?
Well, we didn't want to do it specifically with this property, the last time that this was brought out.
Well, again, and the, just to be clear, and I think that was, and it was right, I think it was last year, it was like right when I first got here, that there was, in my opinion, technically, under the redevelopment law, you can spot zone, for lack of a better word, and you can allow permitted uses in one property, if that's what you choose. And that was, I think, an initial approach, and it was, you know, certainly met with, I think, some people, the perception that you're picking a single property for a single tenant for a single use. It was not necessarily reflective of, you know, general planning consideration, it's more, maybe struck people as sort of deal-making, property by property, and maybe that wasn't the right way to govern. That is not what we're talking about here, we're talking about, you know, a more holistic approach, but in the narrow subset of the side streets that have a demonstrated inability to attract retail and have for many years. So, and it's not limited to a particular use...
And you think that's zoning that's doing that?
Pardon me?
The zoning itself is what is prohibiting the retail by...
Well, no, I don't think retail wants to go there, period. The zoning's not prohibiting retail, it's permitted. Retail's permitted.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, that the zoning itself is prohibiting...
It's the logistics of being on the dead end of a street, when, if you could be on South Orange Avenue where everybody's driving and walking by, or you have to be the very last property on a block...
No shopper continuity, there isn't shopper continuity.
That, you know, that, it's not, I mean, the zoning permits retail, but retail hasn't gone there.
What would the amendment look like?
In my mind, in some of the drafts that I've seen, the amendment would identify the, it would, again, be limited solely to the streets that do not front on South Orange Avenue. It would add additional permitted uses to the first floor, and, because currently, the way the redevelopment plan's set up is there are, you know, a broad spectrum of permitted uses on the first floor everywhere. It would then identify, and on these following streets not fronting, for properties not fronting, it would eliminate the corner properties. Not fronting on South Orange Avenue, these are additional permitted uses. And generally, they would, you know, the parameters would, in my mind, would involve some component of professional offices and things...
Professional services?
Right, and I would say, in addition to, I mean, this has been bounced around, but I know the South Orange Village Center Alliance recently took it up, they actually had met and reviewed it, and they have endorsed it, and I think several months ago, we got a letter from them endorsing it, a belief that particularly those types of uses, you know, where they don't need to be front and center on South Orange Avenue, but they nevertheless would attract people who then may come down and go get lunch and go shop and go around the corner, would overall be a benefit to the downtown environment.
Yeah, so I was at that Village Center Alliance meeting, and I agreed with that assessment, I actually think there, and I think the market speaks for itself, so if we're talking about a five-year period in, that has been in both a growth as well as a recession period, and we're still haven't seen those spaces being rented out, I think there is great opportunities to get the right types of businesses that will attract, whether it's a professional services, doctor offices, people come, and I think what that does is it actually serves people in town, there'll be services that people don't have to leave our town to go outside for, as well as actually attracting folks from other regional areas to have them come in and get exposed to our businesses. So actually, I think in a finite and well-planned set of circumstances on certain streets, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I'd piggyback on that, because if you look at the snapshot, again, to paraphrase what you said, of the... what you said, of the last five years or more, and these spaces have been relatively empty for most part, then you have to allow some exceptions or make some changes within some parameters to make them viable, and viable. Otherwise, if we keep doing the same thing, nothing's going to change. I would support something like that.
So it sounds like at the very least, what we can be prepared to do is, for the next meeting, have that amendment?
Actual plan, the language.
Right.
Any other comments? You started to talk, I don't...
Uh, yes, then I, then I stopped.
Okay. Anyway, he kind of jumped in, I didn't know if he saw you.
No, I didn't see you speaking. Did you want it?
No, no, I was just reconsidering my thoughts, answered my own question.
Can you circulate a draft of whatever was prepared that you've been working on?
Sure, I'll get you whatever the latest version.
Okay, and you've been working with Susan Gruel on this?
She's largely, I'm not working with it per se, but she's been sending it, so I'll get it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, that is everything?
One thing that I'd like to request is that on the ordinance and the resolutions, if I could be added to the affirmative on all of these resolutions and the ordinance...
I don't think we can do that.
Yes, you...
You weren't here.
I thought you can, as long as the meeting is not...
No, this is, this is the conference agenda where...
Yeah, I mean, we already...
Oh, you already closed out the meeting? Okay.
That meeting is closed.
All right, you're right, I thought the meeting was still open, I'm sorry.
In fact, one last sort of common observation, it was only because I didn't know he was sitting back there the whole time. On the consent agenda, and I assume most of you did pick up on it, but had I known he was there, I would have made sure to point it out to Mark Hartwick for, in the consent agenda, there was a resolution, he basically sort of single-handedly got two jitneys.
Yeah.
And as you know, the jitneys are getting old, and I think there was a lot of concern, particularly on Mark's part, me of the most vested interest to go find him, but he did a great job and got, got two new jitneys from Transit, that was in the agreement. Like I said, it kind of sailed through in the consent agenda, but I think particularly since he, I don't know if that's why he came out, since he's here.
Just loves these meetings.
Well done.
No, but that's, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for pointing that out, that is something that did get wrapped up in the overall consent agenda, but is a huge, huge, huge benefit considering the age of some of those jitneys. Okay, so that's everything, unless there's anything else, and we're going to go back into closed session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, we're adjourned. Technically, no motioning.